Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Welcome to everybody who's in the chambers here and watching online as well. Start our meeting as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, good evening and welcome. We have, we'll get to the agenda here in just a second. We've got a couple of things that of note that I do want to bring forward, but before we do that, we do have our roll call. Mr. Brillhart, if you could please call us, call the roll of the council. Councilmember Beloga?
Present.
Councilmember Carter?
Present.
Councilmember Coulter?
Present.
Councilmember, Councilmember Lohman?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Present.
Councilmember Nelson, perhaps you were muted? Not hearing you, Councilmember. He is indeed present, so why don't we move on? And Mayor, and Mayor Bussie? Present. So let the record show, all seven members of the Bloomington City Council are either in the chambers or available remotely for tonight's council meeting. Move on to item four on our, or excuse me, item three on our agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. Couple of items that I do just want to call out, we do have a couple of timed items tonight. Item five point, excuse me, six point, I'm moving it here now, 7.1 and 7.2 are timed items to time to go at 6:30 and 6:40. So even though they're a bit further back in the agenda, we will be doing item 7.1 and 7.2 immediately after the public comment period around 6:30 and 6:40. And then want to point out that item 8.3 in our organizational business is a closed session, and we will be going into closed session to discuss the municipal stormwater pond coordination litigation. There are limited examples and reasons why cities can go into closed session. One of them is to discuss pending litigation, and we will be going into closed session. So we will finish up our work tonight, we'll go into a closed session, we'll have to clear the council chambers, we'll do the, the item that we have, we will then go back into open session to adjourn the meeting. So just to let everybody know that after, after we get done with item 8.2, we will be going into closed session. So council, are there any, those are clarifications, no changes to the, to the agenda? Are there any additional changes or additions to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I would move approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
Got a motion in the second by Councilmember Beloga for the approval of tonight's agenda, hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brillhart. Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson? No audio on Councilmember Nelson. Let the record show that he mouthed the word "aye." And Mayor Bussie? Aye. Motion carries 7-0. We do have an agenda for tonight's meeting. Councilmember Nelson, perhaps a log out and a log back in to see if we can't get your audio working, or somehow we've got to troubleshoot this, because I'm sure we'd like to hear from you tonight, so if we could do that. With that, we will move on to item four on our agenda, which is the public comment period. It's a 20-minute period at each council meeting where we, where folks are allowed to come before the council and bring forward items not on tonight's agenda. And we have two pieces of the public comment period. Item 4.1 is a response to the prior meeting's public comments. 4.2 is the public comment period itself. We will start with item 4.1, the response to the prior meeting's public comments. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. At our previous council meeting, we had a number of residents that spoke to the council either in person or virtually. Only one specifically asked a question for follow-up. That was Ms. Becky Strohmeyer, asked why the city has hired a porn actor to do children's shows in Bloomington. So I think this requires a little bit of context. We became aware last year that one of the performers that had been hired to be at the upcoming Pride Festival had a social media platform that had explicit material on it. We investigated once we were aware of that, made a determination that that was not the image that we wanted to present for our first Pride event here in Bloomington, and that the performer will not be present at Pride this coming weekend. So I also want to follow up just by reiterating some of what I said last week. One is, Pride will still proceed on Saturday, August 14th, from 5 until 9 p.m. at Civic Plaza. It is a family-focused, community-oriented event that will be a celebration of LGBTQI-plus people in our community, and their families, and their friends, and their allies. And I want to make sure that everybody knows that we are still proceeding with the program, and there isn't a change to the program as a result of some of the social media outrage or whatever you would care to describe it. I would care to describe it as unfortunate, and to some extent ugly, that some of the commentary has tried to make a correlation between sexuality and pedophilia, which, to be clear, there is no correlation between sexuality and pedophilia. And the fact that people are doing that, I think, is just continuing what I would say tiptoes right up to the edge of hate speech, and is, I think, an unfortunate element of the fact that we're trying to do an event here to celebrate members of our community. So the event will be going forward, we will have a successful, family-focused event, and we're looking forward to seeing people here celebrating Pride on August 14th.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, you had said we had found out about that last year. Did you mean to say last week?
I apologize if I misspoke. I did say, it was only a couple hours before the council meeting last week is when I became aware of it, yes. Thank you for that clarification. Council, anything else? No additional questions? The other item that did, was brought forward last week was in regard to Anita Smithson, a Human Rights Commissioner here in the city of Bloomington, and a couple of requests that she be removed from the Human Rights Commission for comments that she made and on social media. And in looking at that, the, our official rules for our commissioners and our, and our volunteers, basically, our city volunteers, they don't fall under the staff protocol in terms of the, the social media policy. So there isn't a specific social media policy for our commissioners or for volunteers. Our council rules also state that while a commissioner serves basically at the will of the council and may be removed for any reason, there isn't a specific list of reasons outlined as to why a person may be removed. And so to this point, I have not heard from any council members who wish to go down that path, who wish to discuss this. And so despite what we've heard, what we heard, I have not heard any from, any member of the council that we want to take this up. So just wanted to clarify that, that that's where it stands. I've had a chance to speak with Ms. Smithson, and she is, she understands that her comments were, were hurtful to the Bloomington Police Officers and Police Department, and especially their families who participated in the Back the Blue event. And I know she's apologized for that, sent an apology through to...
She didn't apologize to anybody. There's no apology.
Thank you, thank you. Please don't interrupt.
You're lying, you're lying. There's no apology.
Please don't interrupt.
Tell the truth.
If you want to disrupt the meeting, you'll be asked to leave. She apologized to the Bloomington Police Department, and both through a statement through the Star Tribune, and I know through a statement that she sent to Chief Hartley, that Chief Hartley forwarded on to the rest of the department. And in, in, she and I spoke, as I said, and after speaking, from my perspective, I consider the matter dead, a past matter. We're, we're moving past it and moving on. So that's where, that's where I stand. And council, again, if there are any members of the council who wish to bring forward a discussion to possibly remove Ms. Smithson, that's, it's open for discussion and suggestion. We could do that at our council issues and updates at the end of the meeting, but without that, I can, as I said, I consider this to be a past issue, and we're moving on. Questions on that? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. I know that last week, we had brought forward, I had an issue in, in updates around talking about commissioner-type stuff, and I do think that it would make some sense to, given the circumstances, and we've had other circumstances in the past, just to bring more clarity around those folks who do serve in that volunteer capacity, not only their, their actions, but also what staff and also what council's expectations are for those particular roles. Not specific to this particular situation, but just in general. I think we gotta take that up if it's early next year or sooner, but thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember, is anything else on this? Seeing no one, we will move on to our public comment period. As I said, a 20-minute period that we hold at each council meeting where folks can come forward and address the council on items not on tonight's agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. We do have a clock to make sure that folks stay within their five minutes, just so it's fair for everyone. Questions from the council will be for clarification only. It's not a back and forth, it's not a time for problem solving or dialogue. It's an opportunity to listen to what community residents or community members might have as concerns or questions, and then we respond to them at the next meeting as part of item 4.1, the response to the prior meeting's comments. So we had a number of folks call in, wished to speak tonight, and I'm just going down the list that Mr. Brillhart was able to provide to me with the folks who wanted to speak. So Mr. Josh Edberg? Mr. Edberg, are you with us this evening?
Mayor Bussie, that was going to be a, Mr. Edberg was a call-in.
Oh, thank you. Amy, is Mr. Edberg available on the phone?
Nora, do we have a Josh Edberg on the phone?
Yes, ma'am. Kindly press star one for you to speak. Press star one for you to speak. Mr. Joshua Edberg, can you please press star one? Mr. Joshua Edberg, your line is open.
Hello, City Council.
Good evening, Mr. Edberg, welcome.
My name is, hi. Yeah, I wanted to provide comments on last week's meeting, which I did view, and I want to thank the council for their kind words that really was reassuring to me as a Bloomington resident. I am a counselor who does counsel sex offenders, and I work with police to make sure the community is safe and healthy sexualities are met. And let me tell you, my friend was bullied, and I could not believe that. And again, thank you for the kind words, it means so much, but I work with the lowest of the low, and let me tell you, my friend is not that. He respects children, and honestly, all the information presented last week was false by Becky. Yeah, he does not do that. He is a respected member of the Twin Cities LGBTQ community, and it was a great disrespect to hear that, because you are not protecting the community, Becky, with your words. You are fueling division, and I call you, you call yourself a patriot?
Mr. Edberg?
You are not.
Mr. Edberg?
Yep.
If you could please direct your comments to the council. This is an opportunity to, to address the council. If you could please direct your comments to the council.
All right, but I am just so glad that the City Council is going forward with Pride, and he is not that. There are much bigger things to worry about in our community right now than a drag performer who identifies as, you know, Satanist pagan, but he has a healthy consenting relationship. And it was just a shame to see that displayed yesterday. And I am so glad that we are having pride, so keep on doing it, and thank you so much. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Edberg. Next up on our list is Paul Coat.
Do I need to sign in first here?
If you could, please.
No name on that, sir. As a reminder, if you wish to speak for public comment, you may press star one on your telephone keypad.
Pound one.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Paul Coat, father of two, Bloomington resident, District One. In recent weeks, and again tonight, we've heard some complaints or about complaints about upcoming Pride event on August 14th, and Bloomington Human Rights Commissioner Anita Smithson's comment that a recent Back the Blue rally promoted, quote, radical, or fascist radicalization. I'll speak on both matters under the umbrella of giving people the benefit of the doubt and judging good faith. I'll start with a personal story and then declare my beliefs. When my son was four at a national night out event, he was invited by a police officer to pet his police dog. The dog bit him on the face, leaving a lifelong scar. After the incident, people told me to sue the Bloomington Police Department and publicize my anger on social media, but I said, "No, it was an accident. Our family connected with that officer, I gave the benefit of the doubt to that officer, and I trusted that he was acting in good faith." So now freely judge my good faith when I tell you that I absolutely believe that black lives matter, and that systemic racism in America leads many in law enforcement to treat people of color differently than white citizens, and we have to fix that. Now, there are those who say that such words are an attack on police. A call for reform is dismissed as an attack on a uniform. When I say black lives matter, or when a person of color speaks of their experience with police, we're not judged as acting in good faith. These critics shout "blue lives matter" in response to "black lives matter" as they wave a black and white American flag with a thin blue line across the middle. But that flag, that imagery, was recently banned by a UW-Madison police chief because the seeming symbol of solidarity with police has been co-opted across the country by some, by what she calls, quote, "extremists with hateful ideologies," including terrorists who waved that same flag at the U.S. Capitol on January 6th as they attacked police. Should we give those who waved that flag the benefit of the doubt after America witnessed waivers of that flag ironically attacking cops? I don't know. Fascism is defined as far-right authoritarian ultra-nationalism that supports the forcible suppression of opposition. Our families saw that on January 6th, when we saw that, that flag waved by cop bashers. Perhaps that's why Anita Smithson made such a connection. One of the Bloomington Back the Blue rally organizers helped organize another rally on January 6th at our state Capitol, and even called that rally "Storm the Capitol." Law enforcement had to put our governor's family under protection because of violent threats spewed by speakers there. That same organizer has recently taken to social media to rile up their audience about another matter, drag queens at Bloomington's Pride event on August 14th that they accuse of wanting to harm children. Bloomington Pride was given so little benefit of doubt that the event would be family-friendly, that these critics investigating the internet footprints of the drag performers to weaponize any dirt they might find are now demonizing everyone associated with the event because they found explicit adult internet content associated with a drag queen. Well, I looked at the internet footprint of that organizer of that Back the Blue rally and found photos of that organizer with January 6th insurrectionists, and the following Facebook post, which I am emailing you all screenshots of. December 6th at 5:15 a.m. about the St. Paul Police Department, quote, "God help them because they just made a fatal error. Who do you serve, SPPD? F-ing terrorists, that's who," end quote. That profane violent threat doesn't sound like backing the blue, and it doesn't sound family-friendly. If the supporters of the Back the Blue rally want Anita Smithson and all of us to give them the benefit of the doubt, and to believe that they're acting in good faith despite profane explicitly anti-cop internet content by one of their leaders, then the benefit of the doubt and a judgment of good faith can likewise be given to those who I express support for here, Bloomington Pride, the beautiful people it celebrates, and yes, those fabulous drag queens. Mayor and council, I believe in your good faith to keep protecting children from all forms of violence, keep protecting Bloomington families from all forms of hatred, and please take with a serious grain of salt those who are so quick to bully and attack LGBTQ people, people of color, our Human Rights Commission, and our public servants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coat. Next on our list, Becky Strohmeyer. Ms. Strohmeyer?
Wow, it's almost like this meeting is about me today. This is super interesting. I had a whole nice five-page speech prepared here, but it seems like I have to address some things that I've heard in the past 20 minutes here. First of all, to Mr. Coat, just said that, I would like to add some context to my statements about the St. Paul Police. That was immediately after our protest outside the mansion had been attacked by BLM and Antifa. We had tires slashed on cars, we had anarchist symbols carved into our vehicles, all while 100 police officers held us all back and let them proceed to destroy our cars, assault our journalists. Somebody got arrested for trying to pull that woman out of being assaulted. So yeah, I was a little disappointed in police that day. Jamie, kind of wondering, so if me exposing a Satanist pornographer who not only films pornography, but films pornography role-playing with young boys at family events? See, that's the big part you're leaving out here. Okay? Nobody's upset about your everyday drag queen? It is a little ridiculous that taxpayers are paying for drag queens. I don't know. You know, the city of Bloomington has been spending thousands of dollars every year to host a booth at Pride, and I've never said anything about it. So you can stop the conspiracy theory about, it's just we hate gay people. That's not it. No, I hate Satanist pornographers who have a fetish for incest and young boys dressing up like a woman to entertain children. And it's really pathetic that this has to be explained so much and so hard to you people. What, what don't you get about? What's wrong with that? It's not hate speech. How is it hate speech for me to call out a Satanist pornographer that you guys hired to entertain our children? But it's not hate speech for the Human Rights Commissioner to call us, call our event fascist radicalization and call us fascists, and continue to double down on her actual hate speech towards me? Okay, so what is, how come we can't call out? What is something obviously wrong? Obviously, there's something wrong with it if you canceled it. It took you four days. You were alerted to it, and it took, would have taken you 20 minutes to verify that information on Twitter. Took me 20 minutes, wasn't that hard? Okay, but it took you four days. And that's because you guys don't listen to us. I can come up here and be like, "Oh, my goodness, you guys hired a pornographer, and the porn is actually on Twitter for everyone to look at." And you guys will just tune me out, just like you tune out all the residents that come to you with the truth. So it took you four days after legal threats, after phone calls, after a whole lot of other people had to get involved, then you decided to do the right thing and give me the win. I know it's giving me a win to cancel the satanic pedophile pornographer. You know, I don't have time to do this now. It's just real interesting how you guys hate me so much, that now this has become about me and giving in to me instead of doing what's right for the people of Bloomington. You know you've gotten enough complaints about this, but you guys don't want to break up your little thing you've got going. Do the right thing. This isn't a win for me. I don't want taxpayers paying for drag queens whatsoever. Okay, that's not cool. That's not something a lot of taxpayers... I've met Democrats that don't even like that. Okay? Do the right thing. Stop, you know, giving your friends the benefit of the doubt and letting your friend... You know, Jenna, Anita Smithson's a big campaign donor to your campaign. Wonder why you're giving her a pass? She's your friend, of course. Nathan, she's your friend. Bussie, she's your friend. You guys are here to serve the residents of this community, not your friendships. Okay, if you're such great friends, your friendship will survive her terrible mistakes. Start serving the residents of Bloomington.
Thank you, Ms. Strohmeyer. Mike Picard, Mr. Picard, are you here this evening?
Hello. Mayor, councilmembers. As suggested by the city manager, I contacted Amy Larson, who is the city of Bloomington's risk litigation manager. She contacted the city's insurer, LMCIT, and they have agreed to reopen my claim. She did confirm my assertion that Dwan does not have a written policy in place to cover damages caused by golfers. Reopening the claim is a nice gesture, but I think it is a futile endeavor. Here is why. Say I purchase homeowner's insurance from State Farm, but I do not purchase insurance on my vehicle. I get into an accident and my vehicle suffers damage. No matter how many times I submit a claim for the damages, State Farm will always deny the claim. They do not insure my vehicle, they insure my home. Currently, no matter how many times my damage claim is looked at, it will never be paid because Dwan does not have a policy covering damage caused by their paying customers. Talk to Amy Larson, she's on the staff, she will verify there is no policy. Here's what I think should be done. Number one, pay for my windshield. Number two, have management start a written log of any calls the club receives related to damage to property. Last week, the city manager said there have only been two claims filed with the city insurer. I know that one of my neighbors called a few years ago about damage. He too was told the same assumed risk spiel that I heard, and he filed a claim with his insurance. No log, no record, faulty data. Okay, it's not, they're not logged. Draw up a written damage policy that covers not only the ideal case where a neighbor sees the golfer causing the damage, but also the case like mine. The policy needs to include a requirement that management needs to make an effort and show up. Stop by and look at the damage, pretend you care, even if you don't. Have Dwan look at purchasing an insurance policy that covers damage or injury from its paying customers. Right now, filing a claim is useless. This will bring in an unbiased third party. No one wants the city of Bloomington randomly paying for every broken windshield, but real damage is happening at times during the 14-hour... damage is happening at times during the 14 hours Dwan is open to property where the homeowner does not see the golfer. Making me and my neighbors responsible for 100% of the damage 24/7 strikes this former science teacher as the most illogical part of the current policy. Be aware of the areas where most of the errant shots occur. Remember when the lady who talked about housing talked about the importance of data? If Dwan sent one employee out to walk the fence line at the same time each day, they could tally the number of errant shots in each area. Netting projects are expensive. Weigh the trade-off. A budget item for yearly damage versus a budget for netting, which makes the most financial sense. So I have two questions. Do we all agree that Dwan does not carry liability insurance for damage or injury caused by their paying customers hitting errant shots out of the course? A second question, since a claim for damages will never be approved, will Dwan continue to offer this option to the next person who contacts them about damage or injury? Or will they inform the person that filing a claim is futile and it will never be approved? And, I've been lazy lately, only went on one rock. This is the past, this is the present. I think Dwan is getting a better, higher skilled level set of golfers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Picard. One question for Mr. Picard, if I could. You raised during your public comment, and I just wanted for clarification, are you looking for those three things that you brought forward for council to respond to those three things?
The, I mean, the questions at the end about...
Well, the questions, but you had mentioned there are three things that you wanted to get down, including the written log and paint the window.
Oh, yeah, I would like to see that happen. Well, I think it just makes sense. You have a business, you should log the people calling in. They don't, I'm sure they don't do that right now. And, you know, I know my memory's not, you know, I don't remember, you know, people call, but I think that, I think that, yeah, I think Dwan needs to look at what they're doing in terms, when there's damage. It should be in writing, they should log the calls, you know, and they should actually come out and look at the damage. And, you know, just the whole policy needs to change. I think, I think it needs to be more, you know, neighborly, I guess the word would be. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Picard. David Edstrom? Mr. Edstrom, are you here or is Mr. Edstrom on the phone, calling in tonight? Amy, could you check to see if Mr. Edstrom is on the phone?
Nora?
There are no participants over the phone, sir, at the moment. There are no participants over the phone at the moment, sir.
All right, very good. All right, we have just a couple of minutes left in tonight's public comment period. Is there anyone else here in the chambers who'd like to address the comment, council on items not on tonight's agenda?
Got to sign in.
Yes, you do.
Okay, so I'm Christine Wheelie, and I'm just here on behalf of the Bloomington residents and would just like to address the event coming up this weekend, and I would ask that you would reconsider hosting that event with the Pride event. First and foremost, I just want to read why it's important. According to the Article 1, Section 16 of the Minnesota Constitution Bill of Rights that talks about the freedom of conscience, no preference given to any establishment of worship or religion, and we know that the, this is a secular humanism gathering. And so, I'm just going to read that. Secular humanism means a faith-based worldview that is also referred to a postmodern Western individualistic moral relativism or expressive individualism and anti-theism and is often the mirror opposite of theism. The term refers to a religion whose doctrine worships man as the source of all knowledge and truth, a belief system that is centered on the unproven assumption that there is no moral absolutes and that there is no moral doctrine, should be used as a superior basis for law and policy. There's more that goes into this, but basically, drag queen storytime, all of these things are, it says here that it's a non-secular event where men dress up as women and display inherently sexualized performance that targets minors with the purpose of promoting and normalizing the faith-based beliefs and practices that stem from LGBTQ secular humanistic religion. And so, there's a lot that goes into this. This, this is indecent, and it's against the moral standards of the community to provide and to host what we know is the drag queen storytime or even the event coming up here with those, the Satanist pornographic, we can go online and see what they're going to be presenting. And I would really ask, on behalf of the children, the families, that you take out your emotional appeals, like the friendships, like what Becky was saying, will stand, but this is, this is unacceptable in this city, and it's, you know, we see that in Minneapolis all the time, but this is, this is different. So the emotional appeal is a method of persuasion through sentiment, not logic, that is designed to create an emotional response. We know that men or women dressed up with half of their clothes on creates an emotional response, especially to those children who are very young and who may not even understand, but it's putting things in their mind that is indecent, and this, you're, this is not acceptable here. And taxpayer dollars should not be paying for this. So taxpayer standing means the standing of a taxpayer to file lawsuit, you know, basically against the government actor that is directly or symbolically engaging in practices that violate the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment of Article 1, Section 16 of the Minnesota Constitution Bill of Rights after it actually or prospectively engaged in an action potentially failed at least one prong of the lemon test. The term indicates a test that requires a minimal logical nexus in order to be invoked by a taxpayer when the government is directly or symbolically endorsing a religion in a coercive manner in violation of the lemon test, and person who pays sales tax in the state can successfully assert this form of standing. So we ask that you cancel the event because it's, it should not be going forth and we should not have to pay for such an act. And I just think about, you know, it's like, I've been downtown and I've seen these men and people dressed this way in these events, and I'm an adult, and to see their penis hanging out and wearing their undergarments or undressing, like the Rosedale Mall situation, undressing, that is unacceptable. So it's not a matter of, you know, them doing this or that, we're just asking that you would remove this from the open public air, the open air, the open public, and that that kind of exposure be kept in a strip club or somewhere that is, these people are of age, at least. And so, that's all I have to say, and we appreciate you hearing us out today. So I'm just speaking on behalf of me and the Patriots, the Bloomington Patriots, many different, many different groups, and, you know, again, we're wanting to reiterate that it's not necessarily that we're, you know, whether we agree or disagree on what people want to do and how they want to present themselves, I just want you to know, it's beyond...
Ms. Really? Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council tonight? Seeing no one coming forward, I will close tonight's public comment period, and we will move on in our agenda. And as I mentioned earlier, we have two timed items. So we're going to move ahead to item 7.1, which is a timed item, starting at 6:30. We missed by a couple of minutes, but I think we're okay. This is a resolution awarding the sale of General Obligation Charter Bonds Series 2021A. Our CFO, Ms. Lori Economy-Scholler, is going to lead us through this. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this evening, I'm here to give good news to the council in regards to the taxable, sorry, they're not taxable, they're tax-exempt GeoBonds. So just need to fix that piece of it. Earlier this month, we received our credit rating report from Standard and Poor's. They went through that and to let you know that they did reaffirm our AAA, and others like Fitch and Moody's will come on when we do our bond rating for our fall bond sale for our P&amp;P, but we only had Standard and Poor's to keep the fees low on this particular one, and they did affirm our AAA. Some of the comments from AAA, from Standard and Poor's, that the city is very strong in our economy, so when they look at Bloomington's economy, they not only look at the city's economy, they look at the metro, the mall, and all the pieces at play within the area of the economy. They also look at very strong management. We have long-term detailed financial plans, and we adhere to good policies, and they also look at just the management and look at the council and how cohesive the council is and senior staff. So there's not a lot of change and maneuvers there, so we've got good remarks there on the very strong. We also have a positive budget variance as we end 2020, and that was above our policy limit, and so they're very happy with that piece too. And our strong debt and contingent liability is well within the realms that they're looking at for that analysis. Just going into some of the project detail, at Dred Scott, we're looking at a lighting project that's been underway, this is phase one of it, there'll be other phases. You can see little dots there in the middle where the lights are going to go. There's also a fencing piece, safety nuttings in fields five through seven, and tennis courts. And these tennis courts is pretty much a total scrape and rebuild, so I think there was some conversation earlier today on the tennis courts. This is just a picture of how bad some of the tennis courts currently look like there. Some of the funding for the bonds will go to the Herbig dugouts. There is approximately $300,000 of funds coming in from different grants, the Twins, the county, helping fund this dugout piece, and then there's about $300,000 from the bonds that will go to these dugouts, and that will be done this fall. And then there are electronic reader board signs and school playground projects, both at Normandella Hills and at Washburn, that are, those are both underway. So initially, the council approved a reimbursement resolution for $3,950,000, looking at what was in our CIP and some of the projects. One of the projects that was in there was for parking lot improvements at a couple of the parks. That project did not get underway, so that will be looked at maybe next year, so that was included in the top number. And then what we went out into the market today, this morning, and was $2,395,000. With the premium that was there for that, our final amount of the bonds is now $2,505,000. It's a 10-year term. We had six bidders. The initial interest cost, total interest cost initially was at just over 1%, and we ended at 88%, excuse me, .88%. Without the premium, it would have been a little bit lower, but the premium added a couple basis points. So it was initially at .857, and with the premium, it's at .886. So again, this was for the CIP projects, and they commenced in the summer and they will finish in early 2022, and property taxes will be paying for these bonds. So just giving you some current bonding information and timelines. So this evening, we are asking the council to award the bid to Bard through the information for the $2,500,000, and we'll get the receipt of the bond proceeds, and the closing will happen on September 9th. Then in September, later in the month, we'll ask council to set sale for the P&amp;P bonds, and then either late October, early November, depending on where we look at the market to see if there's any ticks in the interest rates climbing, to set sale for that day and sell the bonds. And then late 2021 to early 2022, we might be looking at bonds for the fire station. So the motion for the council is to accept the low bid, $2,500,000 for these bonds.
Council, any questions? I do have a question. I don't know, have, have we seen interest rates that low before?
Mayor and Council, when we issued the bonds back in November of last year, it was at a .71.
Wow.
And that was the lowest that I could find in any of our bond documents for at least 20 years.
But still remarkably low.
Remarkably low interest rates this time.
My goodness.
When I look at that .88 and I look at our investment market, where we're getting our investment returns, and you see those reports every month, we're at a .8. So we're very close to what we're earning on our money to what we're selling.
My goodness. Well, well done, and glad to hear that. Council, questions on this? Councilmember Beloga or Nelson, speak up if, I don't know if I can see you, so if you have a question, please speak up. All right. Hearing no one coming forward on this, so our public hearing is on the next one, correct? This is just a, this is just an acceptance of a, of a resolution. Am I correct in that?
Correct, Mayor.
I just want to be sure. All right. Council, if there's no more questions, I would look for comments or actions, or how do we want to proceed with this? Councilmember Coulter.
Excuse me, sorry. I'm happy to make the motion. I don't see anybody...
Councilmember Coulter.
All right, Mayor, I will move to adopt a resolution awarding the sale of, it just disappeared, some bonds for some things. All right. Awarding the sale of General Obligation Charter Bonds Series 2021A in the principal amount of $2,500,000, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Martin, to award the sale of the General Obligation Bonds Series 2021A.
Thank you.
Hearing no further council discussion? Mr. Brillhard? Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lowman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussy?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Well, thank you very much for that. As I said, very impressive numbers there, very impressed at how the, the bond houses continue to view Bloomington's financial state, especially after the tough year and a half that the city of Bloomington and every city in the state of Minnesota has had. So that's, it's very nice to hear. So thank you for that.
It is, it's great. Very good news this morning.
And with that, we'll move to item 7.2, which is also a timed item, and this is a public hearing, and it's a public hearing regarding the Friendship Village Host Approval. Ms. Economy-Scholler.
So Mayor and Council, I don't have a PowerPoint for the presentation, this is generally a short item. The IRS rules require that if another location, another government location is issuing the debt, and they're going to spend that debt in our city for a project, whether it's refinancing or building, that host city has to give permission to spend those dollars in our city. So that's the item for the council this evening. So the Iowa Finance Authority has, is issuing, wants to issue up to $175 million of bonds, and they are doing that for Lifespace Communities. And so, Lifespace is Friendship Village, and they'll be using $45 million of that $175 in Bloomington. So we have David Grosscross and David Miller from Lifespace. David Grosscross is from Dorsey Whitney. Should you have any questions from the host group?
Council, questions on this? Do we understand what we're doing here? Just basically, Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to sort of clarify for the, the public and folks watching at home here, this is not a financial obligation of the city. This is simply the city providing permission for these bond proceeds to be spent within the city of Bloomington. This is not city dollars, correct?
Mayor and Councilmember Coulter, that is very much a correct statement. The Iowa Finance Authority is issuing, and they're the obligation of that group, and the actual payments will come through Lifespace. These are revenue bonds. It is not an obligation of the city of Bloomington.
That's what I intuited, but I just wanted to, to make sure. Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions? Hearing none? This is a public hearing, and right now, I would like to open the public hearing on item 7.2, which is regarding the Friendship Village Host Approval. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on item 7.2 at this public hearing? Anyone like to speak? I see no one coming forward. Amy, can we see if there is anyone on the phone who would like to speak to item 7.2?
Nora, do we have anyone?
Again, a clear reminder. Yes, ma'am. As a reminder, if you wish to speak for a public comment, you may press star one on your telephone keypad.
Item 7.2?
Again, please. Please press star one if you wish to speak. Thank you. As of the moment, ma'am, there are no who wishes to speak. There's none. You may proceed.
Thank you.
We have no one on the phone who would like to speak. Last call for anyone in the chambers who would like to speak on item 7.2. Seeing no one coming forward, counsel, I look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga, a second by Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing on item 7.2. Hearing no further counsel discussion, Mr. Brillhard. Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Public hearing is closed on item 7.2. Counsel, I would look for action on this.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to move the item.
Councilmember Beloga?
Move to approve the resolution granting whole city approval for the issuance of bonds by the Iowa Finance Authority.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga, a second by Councilmember Martin, to approve the resolution granting host of city approval to issuance of, by the bonds by the Iowa Finance Authority. Hearing no further counsel discussion on this, Mr. Brillhard. Beloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you much. Thank you much for that.
Thank you, counsel.
With that, we will actually double back in our agenda to item five, to our introductory items. And item 5.1 on our agenda is the introduction of new employees. Mr. Brugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. This agenda item this evening, which we have just recently restarted after a little bit of a hiatus, is to introduce both to the council and to the community, new employees coming to work for the city and to serve the residents and businesses and visitors of Bloomington. So this evening, we have, I believe, two new employees in community development. I'm going to invite Community Development Director Carla Henderson up to introduce our new employees.
Good evening, Ms. Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you very much for this opportunity. So I have two employees that I'd like to introduce virtually. The first employee is June Wei Tan, who is an environmental health specialist in environmental health, and he is approaching his six-month anniversary. And there he is. And then we also have Elizabeth Bushaw, who is a part-time office support specialist in buildings and inspections. And there's Liz, yes. And so I did want to share that I'm absolutely thrilled to be able to introduce them to this honorable body. I do want to share a story about June Wei. He came across a resident that an elder woman who needed her garage door painted and repaired. And Brush with Kindness is a subsidiary, a part of Habitat for Humanity. And so they reached out, and the rep that was working with the homeowner said, can you give her some time, because I'm going to try to find some resources to help this resident? And so June said, well, great. I mean, can we use this for other residents? And so they said, well, you know, we like to work, partner with municipalities. And so June sent it up the chain, Lynn Moore, reached out. A call was made with Barb Wolf and Erica Coleman with Brush with Kindness. And in the next 30 days, we will have a formal relationship and be able to provide this opportunity they're able to leverage, because they use skilled staff and skilled volunteers. And so I want to acknowledge June Wei for that, taking that initiative, because that's the kind of staff we have here in the city of Bloomington. I'm extremely proud of that. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. We, I, welcome, first of all, welcome to both of you. I'm, I'm sorry you're not here with us this evening. It's much, you know, the introductions are much nicer face-to-face and in person, but still very glad to have you on staff. And as new, as new as six months, or somewhere in between now and six months, that you're new employees here in the city of Bloomington. If, could you just, if you could, please tell us just a bit more about yourself, where you came from, your impressions so far of the city of Bloomington, and just a chance to get to know you a little bit better.
Yeah, hi, everyone. My name is June Wei Tan. And like Carla mentioned, I work in community development. I'm in environmental health and under Lynn Moore. So I actually came from Hennepin County. So I started with them in October last year, and I only worked for them for five months before I came over to Bloomington. A little bit about myself, I grew up in Singapore, born and raised. Two years of mandatory military service in Singapore before coming over to Minnesota. I did my undergrad at a U, went out to Reno for grad school, and you know, I love Minnesota so much, so I came back. So that's a little bit more about myself. The city is a great place. Everyone's really friendly, and it's very welcoming, so I'm glad to be here.
And we're very glad to have you. Thank you very much. Welcome, June Wei. Liz, could you tell us a little bit about yourself? Welcome.
Yeah. Thank you very much. So like Carla said, I am a part-time office support specialist with the Building and Inspections Department, and I started the same day as June, so we're both about six months in. I actually have a background in planning, and I did that for a couple of years before I kind of realized it wasn't really a fit for me. So I'm kind of back to the drawing board, and I'm now looking into going back and getting a master's in public health. My impressions of the city so far are, I have a super high opinion of Bloomington in my experience at this point. It's the leadership that I've witnessed has been outstanding. There is always thought to everyone involved, and always an acknowledgement of diversity and inclusion. So I'm a big fan so far. It's been an unusual start to a job, to be sure, but it's going well.
Yes, it has been an unusual start, and I'm glad to see you're persevering through it. So glad you're able to do that. So welcome to both of you. Liz, June Wei, thank you very much for joining us this evening. If, if and when we're back together again, I hope to get the opportunity to meet you face-to-face, but welcome to the city of Bloomington.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Anderson, for the introduction. On to item 5.2 in our introductory items, and we have our survey results in from our 2021 Resident Survey, annual survey we've been doing for a number of years now, and looks like some interesting results once again. Diane Kirby is our Community Services Director, and she's going to lead us through this.
Well, good evening, Mayor and City Council. As the mayor mentioned, we have been doing this a number of years. In fact, this is our 10th anniversary. We have been doing the National Community Survey of Bloomington residents every single year since 2012. So this is your 10th survey results that I'm going to be presenting to you right now. So let me get started by giving you a little bit of background about the National Community Survey. And I can get it to advance. And perhaps I will rely on Amy to help me advance my slides. So if you want to go ahead and advance. A little bit about the National Community Survey. This is a random sample scientific survey conducted annually in Bloomington by Polco and the National Research Center out of Boulder, Colorado. There are 3,600 households that received an invitation to fill out the survey this year. The survey was made available in both English and Spanish, and the polling took place between April 20th and June 8th of this year. Now, this was a hybrid survey. About two-thirds of the households received an invitation to fill out the survey via mail, a paper survey, and then one-third received an invitation to fill out the survey online. We had a total of 732 surveys that were completed. There is a margin of error of plus or minus 4% and a 95% confidence level. Now, there was also an open participation opt-in survey that was conducted online that anybody could fill out, that attracted 136 responses, and the results from that survey are being kept separate from our random sample survey. Other things that we did do with this particular survey is we've got both the results that we can cross-tabulate by both geographic, by council district, as well as demographically, by gender, race, ethnicity, age, rent or own a household, or annual household income. Next slide. So a key benefit of the National Community Survey is that it allows us to benchmark our results against the National Research Center's database of communities from across the country. They have over 500 communities that are in their database that we can compare our results against. And we also receive rankings against peer cities that we have selected. You'll notice on the slide that there is a cluster of dots in Minnesota. And so we have selected 29 cities, what we call our peer cities, similar to Bloomington, that we compare ourselves against. As well, and many of those are in Bloomington, are in Minnesota. So we had 14 cities in Minnesota that we are comparing ourselves against, including Eagan, Eden Prairie, Edina, Plymouth, Richfield, and Woodbury. Next slide. So there were 145 categories in this year's standard questionnaire, and there were 122 ratings that were similar to 2020. 17 ratings increased above the margin of error of 4%, and they included areas such as impact of the economy on family income, fire services, street cleaning, stormwater management, and public places where people want to spend time. Six areas did see a ratings decrease this year below the margin of error, and those were feeling safe from property crime, ease of travel by public transportation, used public transportation, volunteered time to a local group or activity, availability of affordable quality mental health care, and watched a local meeting online. And I will tell you, that rating did drop from 30% that reported in 2020 to 25% in 2021. Next slide. And as I mentioned before, we are also able to benchmark our results against cities and counties in the NRC's national database. 22 categories had higher or much higher ratings in the national benchmark in 2021. Higher ratings, areas where we saw much higher ratings included snow removal, drinking water, employment opportunities, land use, planning and zoning, and traffic flow on major streets. Only five areas rated lower than the national benchmark. And those lower ratings were volunteered time to a group or activity in Bloomington, watched a local public meeting, overall opportunities for education, culture, and the arts, how much the city should focus on the overall design of Bloomington's residential and commercial areas, and residents' connection and engagement with the community. Next slide. So let me tell you about some of the specific findings from this year's survey. With our key finding number one, respondents continue to view Bloomington's quality of life very favorably. Next slide. When asked about their quality of life, 91% of respondents rated it as excellent or good, and this is similar to last year's rating, and the score is in the upper one-third of the national benchmark. Next slide. Bloomington as a place to live remained steady at 91%, and your neighborhood as a place to live inched up to 88%. And the overall image or reputation of Bloomington came in at 75%. Next slide. Respondents who said they plan to remain in Bloomington for the next five years was up slightly from 2020 at 87%, and those who would recommend Bloomington to someone who asked remained stable at 90%. Next slide. The scores for Bloomington as a place to raise children came in at 86%, remaining relatively stable from last year's rating. Satisfaction rating for Bloomington as a place to retire was unchanged, and the 74% approval rating is good enough to rank it in the top one-third of jurisdictions in the national benchmark. Bloomington as a place to visit came in at 78%, within the top one-third of jurisdictions nationwide. Next slide. Our key finding number two from this year's survey, residents continued to identify safety as an important focus area for the city, and scores here remain strong in most areas. Next slide. Overall feeling of safety remained relatively unchanged at 80% in 2021. That overall score is similar to the national benchmark. Feeling safe in your neighborhood during the day held steady from last year at 96%. And feeling safe in Bloomington's commercial areas during the day was unchanged from 2020 at 88%. Next slide. Feeling safe from property crime did drop below the margin of error this year from 83% in 2020 to 75% in 2021. This score is actually similar to the early days of when we started administering the survey to the scores we saw in 2012 and in 2013. It was also similar to the national benchmark. Feeling safe from violent crime dropped to 84% in 2021, but was still within the margin of error, and feeling safe from fire, flood, and other natural disasters was unchanged this year. Next slide. When it comes to public safety, ratings for nearly all services increased this year. The police score improved by 3%, ranking it in the top one-quarter of all jurisdictions nationwide. Crime prevention remained stable at 78%. And the rating for fire services rose by 5% this year, tying for an all-time high of 97%. Nationally, the satisfaction rating for fireplace Bloomington in the top 20% of cities and counties nationwide, and among the top one-quarter of our peer cities. Next slide. Key finding number three, Bloomington's economy continues to bring in high ratings among residents, and there was good news this year about respondents' personal finances. Next slide. A number of ratings within the economy area were higher than ratings observed in the national benchmark, including overall quality of Bloomington's business and services, which ranked number 35 in the national database. Bloomington as a place to work, shopping opportunities ranks 36 nationally, variety of business services ranks number 14 nationally, and employment opportunities ranked 13 nationally. Most scores in economy have remained stable over time. Next slide. This next question asks what impact, if any, the economy would have on family income in the next six months. Last year, those responding that the impact would be very or somewhat positive dropped by 14% from 29% in 2019 to 15% in 2020. This year, though, this question made a remarkable turnaround, with 31% of respondents stating that their economic impact would be very or somewhat positive on their family income. Next slide. The score for overall design and layout of Bloomington's residential and commercial areas increased slightly to 75% in 2021. That's good enough to rank it in the top 20% in the nationwide database and number four among our peer cities. With a 68% approval rating, the variety of housing options in Bloomington ranked among the top 15% of cities in the nationwide benchmark. And when it comes to the availability of affordable, quality housing, the score remained unchanged at 48%, but that was good enough to rank it in the top one-third of jurisdictions in the NRC's national database. Next slide. In the category of built environment, new development earned excellent or good ratings from 64% of respondents. Well-designed neighborhoods was a new question last year, and its score of 72% was unchanged from 2020. Overall appearance of Bloomington was virtually unchanged at 75%, and all of these scores were similar to other communities in the national benchmark. Next slide. Within the city government area, the scores in 2021 remained strong. And let's take a look at those. Next slide. Bloomington's overall direction slipped some from the 2020 to 67%, but that was still within the margin of error, and this score placed Bloomington in the top one-third of jurisdictions nationwide. The rating for overall confidence in city government was similar to last year's score, 67%, and this ranked Bloomington in the top one-quarter of communities nationwide. And when it comes to the city's overall customer service, this rating continues to improve, rising a total of 6% since 2019. That 88% score places Bloomington in the top 25% of communities in the national database, and it also exceeds the city council's customer service goal of 85% within the strategic priority of high-quality service delivery, and that's for the second year in a row. Next slide. In these ratings on various aspects of the city's governance, two areas rose above the margin of error in 2021, and they were treating all residents fairly, which rose by 6% to 72%, and informing residents about issues increased by 5% to 68%. And I also want to point out that eight of these categories were in the top one-quarter of jurisdictions in the NRC's national database. They were value of services for taxes paid to Bloomington, services provided by Bloomington, treating all residents fairly, generally acting in the best interest of the community, informing residents about issues, overall confidence in Bloomington government, value of services for taxes paid, and the job Bloomington does at welcoming resident involvement. Next slide. Ratings for specific city services generally remain stable from 2021, with the exception of emergency preparedness, which increased by 8% to 82% this year. Scores for the city services listed here were comparable to their national benchmarks, with the exception of natural areas preservation, animal control, and land use planning and zoning. All three scored higher than the benchmark in the national database, and preservation of natural areas actually ranked number eight in of natural areas actually ranked number eight in the nationwide database of jurisdictions and third in our group of peer cities. Next slide. Our next key finding from this year's survey, scores for mobility and utility-related services continue to shine. Next slide. In the area of street repair, after rising by 14% in 2020, the score for street repair settled back a little bit at 58% in 2021. That's still the second-highest rating ever in this category in 10 years, and this was good enough to place street repair in the top one-third of communities nationwide. The area of snow removal, after jumping by 5% to 82% last year, snow removal increased again this year to 85%. That's higher than the national benchmark. It also moved up in the rankings from number 25 of all jurisdictions in 2020 to number 12 in 2021, and it also placed number three in our peer cities comparison. And in the area of street cleaning, that grew by 6% to 86% in 2021, good enough to place it at number 17 of jurisdictions nationwide and number two among our peer cities. Next slide. In other mobility-related categories, ease of travel by car in Bloomington remained at 84% this year. That score ranks it in the top 20% nationwide and number four in the peer cities rankings. Ease of walking in Bloomington was unchanged at 74%, similar to the national benchmark, and ease of travel by bicycle in Bloomington came in at 63%. That's good enough to place it in the top one-third of jurisdictions nationally. Next slide. Now utilities is an area where Bloomington has traditionally done very, very well in the National Community Survey, and it continued to do so in 2021. Respondents poured out their praise for Bloomington's drinking water. The 2021 rating of 93% is an all-time high for this area. That places it much higher than the national benchmark, moving from number three among jurisdictions nationwide in 2020 to number two in 2021, and number one against our group of peer cities. Under the area of stormwater management, after increasing by 12% last year, stormwater management again rose above the margin of error to 92% in 2021. It came in at number 45 nationwide and number one in the peer cities comparisons. And under the area of sewer services, with a score of 93%, sewer services was higher than the national benchmark. It moved from number 10 to number six in the national comparisons and number two among our peer cities. Next slide. When it comes to other utility-related services, scores for all of these services shown here remained steady this year within the margin of error. Garbage collection received an excellent or good ratings from 83% of respondents, a 3% increase in 2021, and recycling came in at 81%. Yard waste pickup posted an all-time high for the second year in a row of 86%. Next slide. Our fifth key finding from this year's survey, Bloomington's wellness and recreation opportunities are really valued by Bloomington residents. Next slide. Starting with health and wellness, the scores in this category remained stable from 2020 with the exception of the availability of affordable quality mental health care, which dropped by 5% in 2021. And I want to note that all of these categories came in at the top one-third of jurisdictions nationwide. Next slide. One of the ways residents stayed healthy this past year was by taking advantage of the city's parks and recreational opportunities. 89% of respondents again rated the overall quality of parks and recreation opportunities in Bloomington as excellent or good. 87% of residents were pleased with the availability of paths and walking trails, of a total of 11% since 2019, and recreational opportunities inched up to 81% in 2021. Next slide. Now, the ratings for city parks dropped slightly this year to 87%. Recreation programs or classes rose by 8% in 2021 to 86%, and 74% of respondents rated recreation centers or facilities as excellent or good. Next slide. Our key finding number six from the 2021 survey, attitudes toward diversity and inclusion have improved over the past year. Next slide. In the area of inclusivity and engagement, while many of the ratings here remain steady, several increased by more than the margin of error. Attracting people from diverse backgrounds increased from 71% in 2020 to 79% in 2021. Opportunities to volunteer increased by 9% in 2021. And openness and acceptance of the community toward people of diverse backgrounds increased from 61% in 2020 to 68% in 2021. Also, you'll note that attracting people from diverse backgrounds ranked higher than other communities in the national database. Next slide. Respondents who rated the sense of community and civic pride in Bloomington as excellent or good rose by 3% in 2021 to 65%, and this is similar to the national benchmark. Next slide. In the area of education, arts, and culture, overall opportunities for education, culture, and the arts scored 81% excellent or good ratings, up slightly from 2020. Community support for the arts received a score of 68%, down 4% this year. And nearly three-quarters of respondents scored K through 12 education in Bloomington as excellent or good, and that is similar to last year's rating. Next slide. Finally, there were three custom questions from last year's community survey that were, again, included on this year's poll. They were related to community inclusivity, the impacts of COVID-19, and city priorities. Next slide. This first question covered residents' perception of community inclusivity. The question was, how welcoming, if at all, do you think your community is to the following groups? Nearly all scores in this category improved, with the exception of people who are Asian, Asian Indian, or Pacific Islander. Nearly all respondents thought that the community was very or moderately welcoming to people who identify as white. But the scores for being welcoming to people who are Asian, Asian Indian, or Pacific Islander was down 6% from 2020 at 80%. The scores for people who are Hispanic or Latino improved by 6% to 80%. For people who are American, Indian, or Alaskan Native, rose by 8% this year. People who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, straight, or other non-straight sexual identities stayed stable this year at 76%. For how welcoming the community is to people who are Black or African-American, that grew by 11% from 65% in 2020 to 76% in 2021. People who are Arabic or Middle Eastern, this category improved from 61% to 69% this year. And people whose first language isn't English rose by 5% to 67%. People who identify as transgender remain the same as last year, and people who are not U.S. citizen, that grew by 3% to 64% this year. Next slide. This next question asked, how much of a priority, if at all, should it be for the city of Bloomington to focus on each of the following areas? And we saw two rise to the top. 83% of respondents scored these two as being of high priority or moderate priority, and they were addressing social, economic, and racial equity differences in the criminal justice system and in education. That was followed by addressing differences in housing at 82% and creating adverse, inclusive, and fair community at 82%. Next slide. And this final question focused on the impact of COVID-19 in Bloomington households. It asked respondents to rate how much of a problem, if at all, the following issues were to them. Loss of employment income was a major or moderate problem for 21% of respondents, that's down from 26% in 2020. 18% reported that loss of income from retirement savings was a major or moderate problem, down 8% from 2020. And loss of housing was a major or moderate problem for 6% of respondents, that's down from 10% in 2020. Next slide. When it came to the lack of paid sick leave or time-off benefits from employers, 12% reported that it was a major or moderate problem in 2021, and that's down 6% from 2020. Next slide. So that's just a quick overview of the results from the 2021 National Community Survey of Bloomington residents. The full survey results are posted on our city website at BloomingtonMN.gov, and just search for 2021 survey to find the full report. And I will stand for questions now.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. Glad to hear that Bloomington is rocking it in sewer services. That's good to know.
It really is.
Glad to hear that. Well done, Carl. Well done. Two questions that I have. One, and I'll ask you because I guarantee we're going to be asked it or we'll see it and post it on Facebook or social media or I'll get asked it personally. I guarantee somebody's going to come forward and say, well, you only had 700 people answer this. You didn't ask me these questions. How can this be at all valid in a city of 90,000 people? 700 people answer a survey? How can that be valid? How would you answer that?
And mayor and city council, I mean, this is actually, as I mentioned, this was 95% confidence level. So they have a way of doing this when they randomize surveys, asking people, and they take every nth number of households. They're able to, with a 95% confidence level, they're able to replicate that and say that generally the community feels the same way the rest of the...
So statistically significant, statistically valid?
Exactly. Scientific.
Scientific, the whole bit. Good, I appreciate that. And I just think that's important to keep repeating because we've heard it before, and I guarantee it'll be a question brought up again. The second question I had, a bit more, not as specific, but what was seen nationally? And what does the community survey, the national folks who are working on this, what do they see, the 2021 results compared to the complete aberration that 2020 was, as opposed to 2019? I mean, I'm looking at hearing some of the changes that you brought forward, the people with less, who used public transit less. Well, of course, they use public transit less, or that were more dissatisfied with public transit because it wasn't running, basically, for the better part of 18 months. Do they have a way of quantifying or bundling up or kind of, how are they comfortable with these results compared to such a strange year in 2020? And is it more accurate to compare them to 2019?
Yeah, mayor and city council, you know, I think what's interesting is that, if you recall, last year, we actually conducted the survey at a later date. Normally, we will conduct this survey in the May-June timeframe, and we do that every year. Last year, because of COVID-19 and the pandemic, and we knew that people were, their minds were elsewhere, right? They were thinking about other things last year. And so we ended up conducting the survey in August and September of last year. And I think what you're seeing, actually, is kind of interesting that the trends here are good, and we've seen some nice improvements in some areas, especially under community engagement and inclusivity over the past year, which is pretty remarkable given the past year. So I have not heard yet what the National Research Center is seeing across the country in terms of the surveys that they've been doing, but I just think it's been interesting to see that our ratings have pretty much held up, and we're seeing some real nice improvements, like I mentioned, household income, another area that rebounded really nicely in this survey. So that was good to see.
Absolutely. And overall, good survey results. It was good to see, once again, that it affirms the work, I think, that our city staff does and the direction overall that we're taking here in the city. Council, any questions? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. So one question, two questions here. First one is around the peer cities. Who are these peer cities? You know, I just realized we didn't even say who they are again this year.
Yes, councilmember Lohman and mayor and city council, they are actually cities that we've identified as, we like to compare ourselves against Minnesota cities, so we've been adding those in throughout the years. But these are other cities across the country that are actually high-performing cities that we like to compare ourselves against. They may have similar characteristics as we do in terms of being close to transportation corridors, close to an airport, and so they have similar characteristics that Bloomington has.
Could you give us a couple of examples?
Couple of examples that I can think of right off the top of my head. One example is Arvada, Colorado. And I believe another one that we've included in the rankings is Bellevue, Washington.
So that kind of give you, and when you go in to look at this online, you'll be able to look and see specifically which ones there are in Minnesota, just if you're watching and you're looking for that. And so just to have a better understanding for our residents that see this, I mean, we've got number one in drinking water, which I just absolutely love that. But I'm not sure how many years we've had that, but help us understand what that means to be ranked number one nationally with that. How many cities are we talking about? What does it take to get that kind of rating with that?
Yeah, councilmember Lohman and mayor and city council, that's a fantastic ranking, actually. When you're talking about, of all the communities that ask that particular question, and that's probably well over, in excess of 400 communities that ask about their drinking water, to come in at number one is very impressive, especially given just the breadth of communities across the country that are utilizing the National Community Survey. So it's pretty impressive.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, councilmember Lohman set me up nicely on that one because I want to ask about drinking water, too. Because, in fact, we were number two nationally on drinking water, and so I'm going to ask the question that I know we're all dying to ask. Do we know who's number one, and what do we need to do to get them out of that top spot? Maybe the second question's a better question for Carl.
Yes, councilmember Coulter and mayor and city council, I do not know the answer. Sorry about that.
Totally fine. But we should seriously find that out. On a more serious note, you know, one thing that caught my ear was the perception of inclusivity, and I'm really glad to see those numbers go up. But the one exception to that was the Asian-American Pacific Islander community. And I'm wondering, I mean, we know nationally that, you know, that is on the rise largely, unfortunately, because of COVID. I mean, are we seeing that kind of thing kind of across the board? That's not, like, that drop is not specific, I'm sure, to the city of Bloomington, correct?
So councilmember Coulter and mayor and city council, you remember that that's actually a custom question that we asked. So there are not other communities that are asking that question.
Gotcha.
But I'm, yeah, I can't speculate on the reason for that, but yeah.
Okay, well, you can't, but I obviously just did. And then, I, you know, I don't know, maybe it's just sort of an idle musing, but I'm curious if you have any explanation for, you know, I mean, we have a great fire service. I have no question about that. But it's not like we saw more fires than usual last year. I mean, do you have any idea what the explanation is, or suddenly people just more aware of it, or what's going on with that?
Yeah, councilmember Coulter and mayor and city council members, perhaps Fire Chief Yuli Seal would be better able to answer that question at another date, but clearly, people love our fire department services, and he may have more insights than I would have on this.
Well, thank you. No, that was just an interesting note to me, and I was just curious about that. Thank you.
I see that our chief, Yuli Seal, has popped on. Chief Seal, would you like to comment on that at all? I've never heard Chief Seal unmute before. All right, we'll have to catch up with Chief Seal at a later date then. Councilmembers, any additional questions, comments on this? Well, if not, I would urge everyone who is interested to go and read this online. All of the information that we have in our packet and all the information you heard tonight is available on the website, and it lays it out. I see you, Jack. I'll get to you in just one second. It lays it out, and it's interesting, and it allows you to compare between cities and see the breakdown, and it's good and it's interesting stuff. And I really do encourage people, dig in, take a look at it, and take a look for yourself and see where it all falls. And it's just, it's time well spent. I know I spent quite a bit of time the last couple of days just looking through all of the different categories and breaking them down and looking at where the breaks came and where the different levels of satisfaction were and different things. It's interesting stuff. So I would really encourage people, if you get the opportunity, if you get the chance, if you're curious at all, dig in. It's right there, and it's all right in front of you. So please don't hesitate to do that. Councilmember Beloga, and then I see councilmember Carter as well. Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good presentation. Appreciate the information. Lots of it, and it's, you know, these surveys contain lots and lots of detail, so appreciate you synthesizing it in the way that you do. I suspect that we'll be getting a hard copy of this at some point in the future, as we have in the past. And is it now on the website, available for folks? It is.
Yes, councilmember Beloga, it is online right now.
Excellent. Thank you. And then, lastly, there were a few points that I didn't pick up on your presentation. So if I could see, if you could give us a copy of the deck that you used for your presentation, I would appreciate it because with the rapidity that we're going here because of time, it's hard to catch all the finer points. So would appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. And this question may actually be more for Mr. Verbrugge. So is this information going to be used in the community-based, or the community-based strategic planning process as kind of background information or information as we kind of start to think about priorities as a community?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Carter, that's a very good question, and the answer is yes. In anticipation...
In anticipation of the core planning team coming together in early December, staff will be assembling what we call a data book, that will have a great amount of information about the community, and the community survey is a really important piece of that, so it will definitely be included in their materials.
Thank you. That's my only question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional? And just for clarification, now, this is our community survey, but there's also a business survey that we're going to be talking about very, I think, later this month as well. Is that true?
Yes, Mayor, there is another survey coming up that you'll be getting the results for shortly, yes. By a different vendor.
Specifically with our business community, and their attitudes and feelings toward the city of Bloomington as well, so that to look forward to. Well, thank you very much. Thanks, as always, it's always interesting to see this information, and appreciate it. Thanks. Moving on to item 5.3 in our agenda, this is our mission moment, we're going to talk about community-based strategic planning. We have been spending time at recent council meetings, kind of going through items related to our mission. I think we've talked about our equity and inclusion, strategic initiative over the past couple of meetings, and I know that this relates to that, and to many others as well, our community-based strategic planning. The whole notion of our mission moment, the mission, the strategic priorities that we put together are now five years old, and we're looking at revising and updating, and trying to find the best way forward to reset those, or to update those, to reflect the community today, and that's what this planning process is. Mr. Verbrugge, if you could give us an update on this?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this will be a relatively short update. I want to thank Councilmember Carter for asking that last question, because it fits in perfectly as a segue to this topic. So, as the mayor said, we are starting a new strategic planning process, and what's different about this strategic planning process, it is, it is an explicit effort to create what I would refer to as an intended future for the city of Bloomington, and that we are doing that in partnership with residents of this community. So, what do I mean by that? We are going to, as I just referenced before, bring together a core planning team that will be equal parts city representatives and community members, probably about 15 of each, for a total of about 30 people on the core planning team. So, somebody may say, well, geez, I'd maybe like to participate in that, that sounds pretty cool. So, how could I do that? Well, on our website, on the front page, there is information about this community-based strategic planning process, and we've titled it "Bloomington Tomorrow Together." And so, if you click on there, you'll see an opportunity to fill out an application that will allow people to indicate their intent, if they wish to participate in the core planning team, or in any other capacity during this process. So, let me talk about some of those opportunities that will be available. The very first opportunity will be as a member of the larger community. We will have a series of community cafes in October of this year, including one day, October, Diane, 23rd?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, thank you. October 16th, Saturday, we will have three community cafes, they will be at Kennedy High School, there'll be facilitated conversations, and we're going to be mining from our residents' feedback on a number of questions, things that they value in the community, things that they see as maybe challenges in the community, things they'd like to see more of that we don't have here, if there are gaps, those kinds of conversations, so that we can get a good sense of what people think about Bloomington, what their hopes and aspirations are for the future, and we will assemble all of that information, we'll do other community cafes, too, we'll be doing them around the community, but those are the three big ones. We will assemble all that information into what I refer to as the data book, and in early December, the core planning team will come together, and that team will spend time laying out the overarching mission and strategic objectives. Then there are two other teams, there's an action planning, there are action planning teams, there'll be one team for each of the strategic objectives that are identified by the core planning team, and there's also a measurement team, so we can have very clear, measurable, articulated goals for those strategic objectives that we will track and we will monitor, so that we know that we're making progress. So, on that page on the website, in addition to having the application for the core planning team, you can also apply to be on one of the action teams, or one of the measurements, on the measurement team as well. So, these are really great opportunities, so what are we looking for in terms of our applicants from the community? What we're looking for are people, one, who more than anything else care about the future of this community, right? And so, it's somebody who really believes strongly in the future of Bloomington. We want folks who are, who are or can be respected members of the community, that within, whether their own affinity groups, or, you know, their own network within the community, they are seen as a person of, a person of a good intent and commitment, and we also want to make sure that we have representation that reflects all of Bloomington. So, we'll be interviewing the applicants that we get, and ultimately, putting that team together probably in mid to late October, and then, like I said, we'll start the teamwork in December. All of this will culminate in a recommendation from the city manager back to the city council on what that future looks like, what the mission and the strategies are, and that will occur in the first quarter of 2022. So, that's the process. Like I say, look for those community cafes, it's really a great opportunity to sit down and engage in conversation with your neighbors in a facilitated conversation. People walk out of there, I think, feeling, one, like their voice has been heard, but two, often making connections that they hadn't made before, it's a good way to get to know other people in the community, and it's a good way to make sure that your input is reflected as we start to consider what the future of Bloomington looks like. Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Council, any questions on this? Kind of laid out in front of us, and I think we can expect, within the next 60 days or so here, the wheels starting to turn to, starting to turn a bit more quickly, and more expeditiously on this, and we'll see this move forward. Thank you for that, Mr. Verbrugge, appreciate it. Oh, Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just have a couple questions. So, you said that there would be interviews, and that, you said we would be doing interviews, and I'm just curious, who is doing interviews, and who is kind of deciding, making the decisions?
Sure, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, we will have primarily staff members that will be doing the interviewing, we'll be having teams of staff, and so I'm expecting that we're going to get a lot of applicants. I know that we already have 30 so far, which is a great number, and I expect we're probably going to get two or three times that many. So, that's an awful lot of people to be interviewed by just one group of employees, so we will have multiple groups of employees that are interviewing folks, and then, we will sit down, and everybody will have some agreed-upon criteria, and we'll work out what everybody heard from the interviewing candidates, and we'll put the team together that way. So, the groups that are interviewing folks will make the recommendations up to me, and ultimately, it'll be the city manager's appointments to be on the core planning team.
Okay, and then, can you talk a little bit about what the council's role will look like, other than kind of approving the final recommendations? Will we be involved in the process, or?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, I think there are three really important ways that you can be involved. One, participating in the community cafes, and having other people see that you're participating, right? We want to make sure that other folks know that you're invested in the future as much as they are. Second, there will be three council members who will be on the core planning team, and I would also invite council members to be a part of the action teams, or the measurement team, if that is of interest to council members. And then, the third really important role is just to be an advocate and champion for this process, and tapping into your networks and encouraging other people to get involved and to participate as much as they can.
Great, thank you. Another question I have, so for people who maybe have mobility issues and can't go to the community cafes, or may even have some technology challenges, so may need like an application meal to them, are we doing, what kind of accommodations do we have in place, so that, you know, we're just kind of keeping the process as accessible as possible?
It's an excellent question. So, if somebody's not able to make it to the community cafe, we're making sure that we are providing opportunities for folks to provide their input, either virtually or electronically. We'll utilize the Let's Talk Bloomington page on our website to get feedback that way, and I believe we're going to have the same questions that we are using at the community cafes on the Let's Talk Bloomington page. And then, that will probably be a relatively brief period, just because we have to turn around that data just as quickly as we turn around the other data, but we'll make sure that folks know about that. And secondly, I think we're going to do at least one virtual town hall-type community cafe, so that folks who want to participate sort of in-person, but can't be live and in-person, will at least have an opportunity to do that. And then, the last thing I'd say is that if people do have special needs, or need accommodations for the community cafes themselves, to make sure that they contact staff, whether that is somebody to provide interpretive services for them, or if they have mobility challenges, that we will do everything we can to accommodate people's special needs.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions. I'm super excited for this, though. It's going to be great, and I know that residents are really excited, I've heard from many people. So, thank you.
Any additional questions, comments? Hearing none? Thank you, we will move on, and we will move on to our consent business. And item six is our consent agenda. Councilmember Beloga, you have a consent business this evening. Councilmember, I believe you're unmute.
Thank you doubly, Mr. Mayor. I've been informed by the city manager that there were no comments with respects to hold for consent business, but last call. Okay, not seeing any, I move for approval, item 6.1 through 6.11.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Beloga, second by Councilmember Lohman, to accept the tonight's consent agenda. Hearing no further council questions or comments? Mr. Brillard? Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. Moving on to item 7.3, as we have already covered items 7.1 and 7.2 earlier this evening, 7.3, it's a resolution to, looking at a feasibility report, and a resolution to order Xerxes Avenue and Old Chalkby Road intersection improvements, that entire project, and to authorize and direct staff to set just compensation and make offers for easement acquisition. Darren Rezek, our, from our civil engineering office, is here this evening to lead us through this. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and members of council, I do have a presentation for All right, so this is the public hearing for City Project 2022-201, Xerxes Avenue and Old Chalkby Road Intersection Improvement Project. Again, I'm Darren Rezek, civil engineer with our engineering division. Also on the line, we have Public Works Director Carl Keel, City Engineer Julie Long, and Senior Civil Engineer Bob Simons. So, a little background, so the city of Bloomington, in partnership with Hennepin County, is proposing safety improvements at the intersection of Old Chalkby Road and Xerxes Avenue. Currently, Old Chalkby Road is under Hennepin County jurisdiction, and it sees about 22,500 vehicles per day. Xerxes Avenue is under Bloomington jurisdiction, and averages about 2,500 vehicles per day north of the intersection, and 7,400 vehicles south of the intersection. During a time period from 2013 to 2015, the intersection experienced 23 reported crashes, and 50% of those crashes were right angle or left turn into crashes, and these statistics were high enough to classify it as a prioritized urban intersection by Hennepin County's roadway safety plan. So, the installation of the left turn lanes on all approaches of the intersection provides significant crash reduction by moving those left-turning vehicles out of the through lanes, which they currently make their turning movements from. So, with a need for safety improvements identified, the city submitted a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant application for the project with support from Hennepin County in 2018. In February of 2019, the city received word that it would receive federal funding for 2022 fiscal year construction dollars. We came before the council, or there's an agenda item at the March 22 meeting of this year, where the council ordered the preparation of a feasibility study for the project. On June 24 of this year, city engineering staff, we held a neighborhood meeting at Westwood Elementary School, and that brings us tonight, the public hearing at the Bloomington City Some design highlights, so the main thing is going to be the installation of dedicated left turn lanes on all approaches of the intersection. Hennepin County will ultimately be the owner and operator of the traffic signal, so they will be evaluating if allowing flashing yellow arrow turning movements will be allowed, and that will be determined later on, when the project is developed. Due to the traffic volumes on Old Chalkby Road, we will, we are proposing maintaining two through lanes of traffic on Old Chalkby Road in both directions. In order to accommodate the geometric changes to the intersection, the city is proposing to do a new traffic signal, and that new traffic signal would include the APS push buttons on all quadrants. Any sidewalk within the project corridor is proposed to have five-foot minimum sidewalk, sidewalks reinstalled, which is the city's standard width, and then, any pedestrian curb ramps also within the project corridor will be upgraded to be an ADA compliance. We are also proposing a mill and overlay on Old Chalkby Road from York Avenue on the west to Washburn Avenue on the east, and then, included in the agenda packet, the feasibility study, so the first alternative that the city investigated was taking that, using kind of a more northerly alignment through the intersection, which would have only impacted properties on the north side of Old Chalkby Road, but during our preliminary engineering, it became apparent that the affected properties would have resulted in, or the impacts of those properties would have resulted in a much greater reduction in usable front yard space of budding Old Chalkby Road, and the driveway slopes that we would have had to reinstall would have exceeded the allowable limits under the Bloomington City Code, and so we kind of did another, well, we did another iteration, and we did a more centered alignment through the intersection there. So, with this, we do have property impacts on both the north and south side of the intersection, but those impacts are much less significant than the alternative one that was laid out in the feasibility study. This work with kind of sliding it to the south a little bit, the south curb line and sidewalk, and sidewalks will be impacted, and we will need to, we are proposing to bump those out in order to accommodate the cross-section through the corridor. So, project cost, so we have budgeted, or we have, our preliminary estimate right now has construction at about $860,000, 20% contingency, a 22% project administration, and then, we have a, we do have seven parcels that we will have to have easement acquisition, and I will go into that in a later slide, and we have that budgeted at $200,000 for a project grant total of $1.5 million. The funding sources are at the bottom table there, Hennepin County is, or is proposing to contribute $325,000. Bloomington will be using our local state aid dollars and local utility dollars, that is $611,000, and then, the federal grant is at about $563,000. So, right-of-way acquisition, we have identified seven parcels that will require sidewalk and utility easements, these same seven parcels. We also need to acquire or get temporary construction easements for the duration of the construction project. Engineering staff has already met onsite with the seven property owners, we went out there and met with them in the spring of 2021, to explain the project and the property acquisition process. The city has also hired an independent appraiser to prepare the before and after construction valuations for those seven properties, and then, the, I guess, the second motion included in the agenda packet, if the city council approved the just compensation figures, and to authorize and direct staff to make offers for easement acquisition. If this motion passes, staff will share the appraisal reports with the property owners, and begin the negotiations for the easements. So, yeah, so originally, in spring of 2021, we did send the mailers to the seven parcels with the right-of-way acquisition, we met out there in April of 2021 to go over the project with them. We did use the city's Let's Talk Bloomington page to kind of explain the project. We did use the city's Let's Talk Bloomington page to kind of explain the project and kind of start our outreach efforts from there. We did send postcards to twelve hundred properties inviting them to our open house and the Let's Talk Bloomington page, and that twelve hundred properties represents basically a half mile radius from the intersection. On June 24, we held our open house at Westwood Elementary School, and our sign in sheet had thirty-six attendees that, that came out that night, and the comment cards are also included in the agenda packet. And then on July 21, we sent postcards to that same twelve hundred properties inviting them to the public hearing here tonight. So the next step, so the Highway Safety Improvement Plan Grant that was awarded to the project, it's going to be administered through the MINDOT Federal Aid Office. So federal, federal projects do require some extra, extra steps and extra documentation, so we are working through that right now, and we will be submitting that to MINDOT Federal Aid here in late summer, early fall, should the project be ordered. And then if the second motion is passed by council tonight, those appraisals that were completed will be shared with the seven property owners, and we will begin negotiations with them. Bloomington engineering staff will be completing the design of the project in-house. We are looking to have plans and specifications completed by late fall or early winter this year. The plans and specifications will then be sent out to both MINDOT and Hennepin County for their review of it. And then following the review of the plans and specifications and the acceptance of the federal project memorandum, the city would be looking to bid the project in March or April of 2022 timeframe, with construction beginning in late spring, early summer. The project is expected to take one construction season to complete and would be substantially complete by fall of 2022. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I, that is it for my presentation, and I will turn it back to you for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rezek. Counsel, questions on this? Councilmember Coulter?
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. Darren, thank you, just a few quick questions here. Sort of to begin with by the, in terms of the background, you mentioned here there are totaled twenty-three crashes reported at that particular intersection. How does that compare to, say, other, even other intersections around, on Old Chalkaby, Old Chalkaby in France, or Normandale, or, you know, take your pick? How does, or even farther west, say, like Bush Lake Road and that area? How does that compare? Do you know?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Coulter, I do not have that information right now.
Okay, that, I, I think that would be helpful to know.
Okay.
And then you, you kind of laid out here the next steps in the process after tonight, and my first question is, do any of those next steps, would any of those next steps require council approval?
Councilmember Coulter, Mr. Mayor, I guess the, the next steps moving forward would be, once the plans and specs are approved, we would, we would ask you to approve the plans and specs as well as set the bidding schedule. I guess Senior Civil Engineer Bob Simons, is there requirements for the easement acquisitions and approving that, those negotiations?
Oh, okay, so I guess, so what you're saying is that the, the plans and specs would come back to the, the council for approval as well at some point in the future? Is that, am I understanding that correct?
Yes, yes, that is correct.
Okay, okay, I think that, that really was my question there. And then, moving forward, I'm, I'm anticipating that there are a few residents here who want to, who have some questions and want to talk about this tonight. After tonight, who is the best person, who, where would those questions be directed?
Councilmember Coulter, Mayor Bussey, members of council, I am serving as the city's project manager, so I'm the one that'll be taking it through the federal documentation process as well as overseeing the design, and then, once construction starts, I will be being the project manager on that project as well.
Okay, so I would, I would say to staff maybe then moving forward, assuming folks are, are curious about this and want to keep following it to make sure that they have the, the proper contact information there as well. And then my last question, you, you sort of touched on it a little bit, but could you, you know, there, you mentioned some of the alternatives that were discussed for this project. Could you talk a little bit about those and, and why they were not, why they're not being proposed here tonight?
Well, I guess the, the, the project was scored at the, you know, the, the Highway Safety Improvement Program level. It was scored as a, the inclusion of left turn lanes in all approaches on the, you know, within the intersection. So that, that's how the, how the grant was submitted and how it was scored, and it is a regional solicitation, so we do compete against, you know, other projects within the area. So I guess the, the alternatives that were investigated were more the, kind of the geometric, how can we, you know, slide the intersection north or south in order to reduce the impacts to those property owners along there?
Thank you. And then just a follow up here, it's noted in the packet, but I'm sure some folks are wondering why a roundabout was not discussed, and could you talk, or not, why that's not the option that's being talked about tonight? Could you discuss that a little bit too as well?
Yes. Councilmember Coulter, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so the traffic volumes on Old Chalkaby Road, they would have required a multi-lane roundabout, you know, you can see them, they have some of them currently implemented in, in Richfield on 66th Street. So in order to, the footprint of a multi-lane roundabout would have required basically the removal of, you know, full, full takings of properties on Old Chalkaby Road and on Xerxes Avenue. So, so that in itself, as well as the roundabouts do also work best when there are traffic volumes on all legs of the intersection that are roughly equal. And right now, we have Old Chalkaby Road is, you know, twenty-two thousand vehicles per day, and then Xerxes Avenue north of the intersection is twenty-five hundred, and Xerxes Avenue south of the intersection is seventy-four hundred. So there would have been significant delay at the, at the intersection if, for those motorists approaching from north or south on Xerxes Avenue.
Thank you. And then just one, one last question here in terms of impact to the, the properties around this intersection. I mean, is it, is it fair to say that if not the, sort of the lowest impact, this is among the lowest impact of, of the proposals that could move forward?
Councilmember Coulter, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that is correct. We are currently in the, in the council packet, the, the project layout in there that, that does lay out the, the cross sections through there, so we are at the, the minimums for, as far as our, our lane widths, our boulevard widths, and our, our sidewalk widths. So, you know, we, we tried to tighten that up as, as much as we can through the, through the project design.
Wonderful, thank you.
Councilmember Beloga, and then Councilmember Lohman. Councilmember Beloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Darren, when we talked about traffic volumes and just about all other aspects of it, and then do a comparison of those numbers against the financial contributions between the city of Bloomington and Hennepin County, the city of Bloomington is funding about two dollars to every dollar of Hennepin County, and I'm just trying to get my mind around that. So I know there's information that supports it, can you share that with us?
Councilmember Beloga, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so the, the cost share agreement that, that we have laid out in there, so we are still working on our, I guess, our negotiations with Hennepin County as far as how much they are going to contribute for this project. That dollar amount is, is what they have kind of presented to us as, as the dollar amount that they would be able to contribute. I will say that, that we do have another project, the Normandale Boulevard and 98th Street, which will be coming before council, and that'll also be a 2022 project, and Hennepin County is proposing to pay for about ninety percent of that project, with the city contributing ten percent. So it's, it's not a, I guess, an equal spread between projects, but on that one, they, they will be contributing more than, than what Bloomington is.
So when, when we negotiate this, what are the key elements that we use?
Councilmember Beloga, could you repeat that again?
Sure. When, when you negotiate with Hennepin County on a project like this, what are the key elements that are considered?
Well, I guess the, the key elements that we consider is the, the, the city did submit the grant for this. We are kind of the, the agency that, that is requesting it. Obviously, Hennepin County does maintain the, the signal within, at the intersection there, so they have proposed to, you know, contribute a, a significant portion of that. But, you know, other than that, it's, it's kind of a negotiation between us and, and Hennepin County.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. So Darren, for a moment here, let's just kind of go back here for a second and, you know, pretend that we didn't have this agreement coming to kind of get this done. How would something like this project be done? Would we go through a PMP process to, to, to get it resolved? Help me understand how that would work with, without this particular agreement?
Councilmember Lohman, Mr. Mayor, are you speaking of the, the agreement with Hennepin County or the, the federal safety improvement grant?
Either. Let's say we didn't get either of those things. For this particular intersection, let's say we don't have any, anything else, how would we go about making this change to this particular area and improving this intersection? How, how would that, how would that work?
Councilmember Lohman, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so I guess the, you know, if, if a segment was on a, you know, Bloomington State Aid route, you know, that safety improvement could be identified, and, and those funds could be paid entirely from our, our state aid account. If it was, you know, within a, a different portion of the city, not on a MINDOT state aid route, that funding would, would need to, I guess, come from someplace else, whether it was a, our traffic engineering fund or, you know, another identified source.
And, and, and in terms of, of this particular area here, so we wouldn't be looking to use a PMP type solution to try to solve this particular area, right? Just, just so I can understand that, just from my understanding?
Councilmember Lohman, Mr. Mayor, that, that would be correct. The, I guess the, the PMP serves as kind of our, doesn't necessarily serve as including safety improvements at intersections within the city.
And since this area is, you know, utilized by the broader public in terms of the transportation that comes through here, that's why it's appropriate for the, for these particular safety measures to, to be considered, along with the, the crash data that's there, and you've, you've mentioned that. And so in terms of how this work gets done, other than those, those residents that are there who may be a part of the, the easement acquisition, what other costs will be associated with those folks that are in that intersection?
Councilmember Lohman, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the, the cost for, are you talking about the cost for the, what the city's going to incur as far as right away acquisition?
Not the right of way acquisition. Does any, is there any other costs that if you, if you're living in that particular intersection that you would be on the hook for, other than that acquisition piece? Because obviously, if there's a land taking, that's a cost, and obviously, I would, would say that with the traffic and the two lanes there, that's a cost too, but beyond those two things that are, that are obvious, is there anything else that the, the property owner would have to endure or have to pay for this particular project?
Councilmember Lohman, Mr. Mayor, members of council, no, there, we, we've identified, you know, our project sources, and, and we do not propose, at this time, we are not proposing doing any type of special assessments for those abutting property owners.
And then finally, Darren, if, you know, I mean, obviously, folks are going to be impacted by this, and, you know, if I was living there, you know, I mean, certainly, having part of my, my property removed, what is, if we were to do absolutely nothing in that, in that area, what, what would happen in terms of that? Would we lose those dollars? Help me understand what would happen if we just weren't doing anything with this project at all?
Yep, Councilmember Lohman, Mr. Mayor, council, yeah, that's, that's correct. I, and this is my, my first federal aid project memo, but I know Bob Simons, our senior civil engineer, is, is also on there, but I believe that those dollars do have a sunset date, so if you don't use them in your program year, they do get, I guess, returned back to the federal aid office.
So essentially, what I'm hearing you say is, we don't use those dollars, those dollars go away, and we'd have to find some other, you know, tax way to kind of pay for that. So essentially, from a, from, most taxpayers who are not in this particular area would have to cover that, unless we found some other grant monies to, to, to do this. Thank you, Mayor, just want to get that clear as we're looking at this.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I noticed in the comment cards that were provided by residents, there was a lot of concern about heavy truck traffic cutting through on 106th over to 35. Is there, I guess, off, off the top of our heads, any indication that the improvements at this intersection would encourage additional cut through traffic? And maybe it's a separate conversation, but are there improvements or elements that could be worked into this to try and discourage some of that cut through in the future?
Councilmember Martin, Mr. Mayor, members of council, yeah, that, that was a, a talking point at our neighborhood public meeting. There was quite a few comments on vehicle traffic and, and truck traffic and speeding on 106th. Again, this, this project is, you know, localized to, to that intersection. We are not currently proposing doing any, you know, traffic volume reduction, you know, items as, as part of the project. So unfortunately, no, we're, we're not proposing to include anything at this time.
I will say though, Councilmember Martin, and I saw those concerns also, and realized that this project probably wouldn't address those in this way, but of course, then it went right to, my thoughts went right to the, the discussion we had a couple of weeks back about how to improve safety and speeds and just overall traffic in the neighborhoods and throughout our community. And given the number of folks who did comment on that, I think that would definitely be a part of a conversation as to how and where to restrict truck traffic or heavy truck traffic as it tries to get from, through Bloomington to, especially to the freeway. So absolutely. Counsel, any additional questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick questions. How does this impact or relate to a project that we looked at just informationally at 106th and Xerxes? I think there was maybe a potential roundabout at that location or some other things. Second question, how does it impact any future alternative transportation plans in that area for bike, walking, pedestrian type facilities?
Councilmember Nelson, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so there, there are some different alternatives for the, for that 100 and, 106th at Xerxes. That, that intersection is going to be investigated with, with the fire station project in the future. And then as, as far as your second question, as far as the alternative transportation plan included in the, I guess, the project layout, is we, we are proposing the inclusion of some type of on-road bike facility going on the northbound Xerxes and connecting into the on-road bike facility that we have just north of there, kind of by the railroad tracks. We currently don't have anything off-road, I guess, planned for, for Old Chalkaby Road, but again, that is a, a Hennepin County roadway.
Seeing no more questions, so I want to explain, we, officially on our agenda, we don't have this listed as a public hearing, but I know that there's a lot of inform, a lot of interest in, in commenting on this and folks who would like to talk. And I do want to explain also, typically, we would have posted this 10 days in advance in the newspaper record in the Sun Current. We didn't do that because there, because there are no assessments attached to this project, we weren't required to do that. We did, I think it was middle of last week or so, we posted that this was a public hearing on the website, and so more than happy to, to hear people come forward if they have questions, comments, suggestions on, on this entire project. So it's, it's a kind of a loosely organized, loosely formatted public comment period or public So it's a it's a kind of a loosely organized, loosely formatted public comment period or public hearing. But we're definitely going to have one because I know folks are here who would like to talk about this. So we will open this up now as a public hearing on this item. And if anyone would like to come forward and speak, we'd be more than happy to have you. So please come forward.
I'd like to ask your-
But but I'm going to need you to tell us your name-
Oh, okay, my name is John Marshall.
And then just because we do this with our public hearings, we're we're trying to limit them to five minutes. So if happy to hear you speak, but we're we're going to just try and make sure that everybody gets a chance for the equal amount of time.
I I wanted to ask you, as you're as you're going east on Old Chocopee towards Xerxes, has anything being done to help the traffic route from Old Chocopee to 106th for those people that use that to get access to the freeway there? That's used quite heavily, especially in rush hour. And right now, there's not a turn lane for the right hand, but there is an an island out there for that. But once you get three cars backed up there, you back everybody up and the traffic backs up. So I was wondering if any of that was in the in the thought process in putting this all together.
Mr. Rezak?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the the, I guess, the pork chop that we like to call it, will will still will still be in there. We we currently out there, we are not proposing for the the inclusion of a a right turn lane to Southbound Xerxes Avenue. And I know the some of the concerns that were that were raised up at the at the neighborhood meeting was the Southbound Xerxes to that left hand 106th, that there is quite a few people that that do make that that right turn and then the quick left turn right there. And then that that does get backed up. But at this time, no, we are not proposing the, I guess, the inclusion of a right turn lane there.
Okay, I that was only my question. I guess I was hoping for those people that use that and go through our city, that I was hoping that would be thought of and make it easier for them to transition through the city as they do that. But whatever, for myself, when I'm in there, I always jump down to 108th Street and come across because I live on west of that a little bit. Thank you for your time, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, just a a quick clarification. We we did actually advertise this in the Sun Current as a public hearing. We did do that on the 5th and then the 29th.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Councilmember Nelson, do you have a a comment or question here on this particular question from Mr. Marshall?
Yeah, I drive that intersection every day to get to my office, and I frankly have the same question as the commenter. It often gets backed up if there's two cars queued there and if there's more queueing space. And I guess my my question specifically is, was that analyzed if we're going through the process of redoing some of these widening things, property acquisition? What were was that analyzed and what were the pros and cons if that analysis was done?
Mr. Rezak?
Councilmember Nelson, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I would, I guess, I would have to report back. The unfortunately, the the grant was put together and submitted before I was employed with the city of Bloomington. So I do not have that information off the top of my head, but I know we have Bob Simons and Julie Long also on if if they had any background information for Councilmember Nelson's question.
And let's be fair and give credit to the person who asked the question, the the resident there. Forgot. I apologize. I don't remember his name. But don't give me credit for something that wasn't my idea, so.
Mr. Mayor-
Ms. Long, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson. We did look briefly at that right turn lane. The issue is, we've also heard a lot of complaints about the traffic on 106th. So if we build a right turn lane to make it easier to access 106th, we reinforce that problem. So we tried to walk a fine line, and we may not have made the right choice, but that was the choice we made when we submitted the application was to not include that right turn lane.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this? Any questions or comments on this project? Please come forward. If you could sign in and tell us your name as you get started, please.
Hi, I'm Colleen Higgins. My husband, Tom, and I live on corner of York in Old Chocopee. And at 10517 York. And we're one of the properties that are being impacted by this. Our whole side yard, they're moving Old Chocopee closer to our house. And we've lived there since 1962, when Old Chocopee was a two lane road. And this is a residential neighborhood. And so our our property, we've tried to keep kept up. And but we have a six foot cedar fence all the way around there. We have a sprinkler system in our yard, and that's all. And we have four big mature trees on that side. And they say they're not going to touch the trees, but how about the roots? We've they've told us, they've sent us a paper with, you know, measurements, but they have never came and showed us for how far into our property they are going to go. The first time they came, they said that we asked them about, there's a telephone pole in the boulevard right between our property and the property behind us. And they said they weren't, we're going to try not to move that. Well, now they say they're going to. So it's going to be brought into our property. And and because with this, then, you know, they have to widen the sidewalk, they have to widen the boulevard. And that's just going to be a mess. We had the property, they had the assessor come out, but we have no results from that. So it's going to lower our property value without any. So really, we're opposed to this project, I guess you can tell. But because Xerxes is not that busy of a street. Xerxes north is only goes up to 98th Street. It's not in like they're talking, the ones going south are going down to 106th Street. And in Xerxes north, there is only a two lane road. And they're that corner there, they're saying they're having right turn lanes, left turn lane. And they're even having a right turn lane off of Xerxes to go east, west on Old Chocopee, which doesn't make any sense at all. We live one block away from there. We have no problem making a left turn onto our street, even in rush hour. Because all the traffic is on the outside lane because they're going down to 106th Street. So it it just doesn't mostly at the accidents, like we said, they're accidents. The main ones are speeders. And to pull out of our street, we have to watch till the light turns red on Xerxes. And then we have to wait for the cars that go through the red light before we can pull out onto our street, I mean, onto Old Chocopee from our street. So it just, I can't see the big, what what's what it's going to make any better. It really, it it and it's just affecting all the neighbors in not good ways. So I just wanted to say, I'm we're we we're opposed to it, so but I just wanted that people know that we are opposed to it. And it is going to lose lower our our property value because our yard is going to be smaller. And the noise now in the trucks and it's coming closer to our house is not what we're looking for. Thank you.
Understood. So I I appreciate your your concern and your opposition and so on. So but the things that that we can control and and could at least answer some of the questions that you've asked. If if we could make sure that Mr. Higgins or Mr. Rezak and or somebody from Public Works gets out there early this week, in the next couple of days, to show you exactly the measurements and where things would be and-
Yeah, it would be nice to know what's going on.
And a phone call perhaps from the assessor's office with some specific information for you, I think, would be if that would be helpful, we can make that happen as well.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So Mr. Rezak, can you make sure that you get out and and visit the the Higgins family in the next day or two here?
Yep, that sounds good, Mr. Mayor.
And if we could make sure that our assessing staff gets the message also, that we might want to make sure that they they get a phone call as well, so they have understand the impact on their property value as well.
Mr. Mayor, clarification on that. We did hire an an outside independent appraiser to complete the appraisals, but I will I will touch base with him and make sure that information gets over to them.
Appreciate that, Mr. Rezak. Very good. Anyone else like to speak? Please come forward.
I'm Pat Palava. I live at 3030 West Old Chocopee. We're right on the corner, northeast corner of Xerxes, Old Chocopee. Hadn't planned to talk, but everything she says is true. Our property values are, I mean, we moved there in 67. So we've been there over 50 years. And when we were moving in, they were taking our land to make make four lanes. Then they put in the lights and they took some more of our land. And now they're going to put a turn lane in and take some more. We're not going to have any front yard. I mean, this is ridiculous. And like she said, I don't understand how this is going to make any real difference in that corner because it seems that most of those accidents are people who are running the red light. And they're going to run red light anyway. What's the difference? If they want to put a a turn lane in, why don't they do it like they did over on Penn? Now, they said that Xerxes and Old Chocopee has so much more traffic, but 98th Street in Penn has a lot of traffic. And they have a they have a turn signal with just two lanes so that people who want to turn and go down Old Choc or go down to 106th can turn. I don't see why that wouldn't make a if if you think that that's really going to make a difference to just put a signal in with the two lanes. And if that works at on Penn and 98th, I don't know why it couldn't work where we are and save us all a big mess on our yards and our property. And I would also like to see the assessor, see what he has to say. I can't believe it's not going to make a huge difference in our property. Thank you.
And thank you. And I I think the I I don't know what the answer is there. I think maybe Mr. Rezak could offer some some input. I I'd go through that 98th and Penn intersection 10 times a day, so I know full well what you're talking about in terms of the but it's the it's specifically the left turn, the left turns north. Let's see, headed west, west to north and then east to south. But not north or not south to east. I mean, so there's there's a it's a it's a it's a it's a combination of things. And and you're right, it's a it's one way of doing it. I I will say it does, it it works, but it doesn't, I don't know if it would work to the traffic volumes and speeds that we have on Old Chocopee. And I I don't know that for certain. I mean, I turned to Mr. Rezak for the-
The speeds are the same as on 98th Street. They're 35 miles an hour.
It I think the speed limits are the same. I think the speed that is built up from stop to stop, you know, moving in moving either stop sign to stop sign or stop light to stop light. I'm not sure. I'd rely on Mr. Rezak for some expertise on this. Mr. Rezak?
Mr. Rezak said that the there's too much traffic that it would make-
Well, why don't we let's let him-
That's what he told me.
But let's is that the answer, Mr. Rezak? Is the traffic are the traffic volumes heavier?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that that is correct. The I just quickly pulled it up on on Google Maps. And the it's a similar situation on on West 98th Street at Penn in that we have two through lanes in either track in either direction with a protected left turn movement. But the the volumes on 98th don't don't match those as at West Old Chocopee Road. And it would be, I guess, it's more or less a similar situation that we have right now out there at Old Chocs and Xerxes.
But Xerxes is not a through street. I mean, it doesn't go anywheres. It doesn't. It goes from 98th to basically 106th because after that, there's nothing. I mean, there's just houses. It doesn't go anywheres. So it's it, anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson, your hand up again?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of clarifications. In terms of the costs, obviously, we've had a couple of people talk about the diminishment of their property values, and that is essentially what the acquisition cost is, is to reimburse them for that. But we had someone raise a sprinkler system, just other examples might be fences or other personal type items in there, the loss of trees. How are those items compensated if if that has to be done, if they have to be removed?
So Councilmember Nelson, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so in regards to irrigation systems, so those get if those do get damaged during construction, we do include a, you know, construction bid item to repair those. So those get repaired under the project. In response to Mrs. Higgins, the six foot cedar fence, if if well, if that if the project gets ordered and it gets impacted, this the city project would be installing that fence at a location in the, you know, outside of the of the new proposed easement. As well as trees also get taken into account for the appraised value as well. And i- if a tree does get impacted or or removed as part of the project, we do offer replacement trees on a on a one to one basis, and that is the the city's policy on all of our PMP projects. So some of the, you know, if it's a if it's a mature tree, it might not be the same, I guess, diameter, caliber size. But we do offer replacements to those property owners.
Thank you for that information. And then just one other quick question in terms of the accident history, obviously, fairly significant if it raised up to the county's level of concern. Do we have any more details on those in terms of what actions led to the accidents? If it was running of red lights, if it was, you know, waiting to turn for traffic or, you know, what? Was there any pattern in that that and that helps inform the design of this intersection?
So Councilmember Nelson, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so the the statistic I spoke on with the the 23 reported crashes and the 50% of those crashes were right angle or left turn into crashes. So those, the right angle or left turn into crashes would would indicate that that was as part of a a turning movement. As far as the, you know, the specific eastbound to northbound or eastbound to southbound traffic data, I don't have that information with me, but I I believe that that was provided in the grant. And I know I see Julie just popped on there. Julie, do you have any more background on that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I don't. Darren, you you did a nice job in answering it. Primarily, the majority of the crashes are left turn crashes or right angle crashes, which left turn bay can solve pretty easily. We didn't see a lot of statistics on red light running. That's not to say that it's not occurring, but it is not occurring with a high crash frequency.
And with that crash data, the thing that always concerns me taking a left or, you know, trying to go north on Xerxes from, you know, coming west on Old Chocopee Road is being rear ended. Do we have do we have any rear end crash data as well?
Mr. Mayor, we do. People get distracted with looking at devices or they're not paying attention. And so, yes, we do also have some rear end crashes. And again, by moving those left turning vehicles out of the through movements, it should help reduce the number of crashes. Earlier, you had asked about other accidents on Old Chocopee Road or other areas where we may have similar problems, just to provide you- Just to provide you some more background, the intersection of Old Chocopee Road and Old Cedar Avenue also has a crash issue that's higher than average. A lot of the intersections along the corridor already have left turn crashes, so, or left turn base, so we aren't seeing the crash problem there. But on, there is one other intersection on the corridor where we are seeing a similar issue.
And that doesn't surprise me. Doesn't surprise me. Councilmember Loman?
Thank you. So, just as those questions were asked, it made me, occurred to me that if, and I know, I realize you don't have the crash data in front of you, but if you were to, as some of the residents have already stated, were to close down, you know, one side of Xerxes, would that, would that make this project not necessary? Help me understand how that would impact what we're trying to do here with that. And then secondarily, as we, let's try to see if I can figure out my, I'll just ask this question to get it out of the way right now.
Councilmember Loman, when you say "close down," what do you mean by that?
So, if we were to, so if you weren't able to, to turn onto Xerxes going northbound, let's say, for example, you were to just close that off. Or alternatively, because the question has been stated out here, that getting onto 106th Street, that's where we're really seeing the, the traffic coming from, is folks coming down. And I know for reasons, from public safety standpoint, we wouldn't want to do that, obviously, because the fire station's right there. But if you were to close that down, how would that impact this piece? So, I wanted to just ask that question. But we also recognize that having that access from a, you know, if Julie Seal was here, she'd probably say, having that access going from that fire station up Xerxes Avenue, from a public safety standpoint, would be the reason why you wouldn't want to close that down. But I think it's worth, you know, since we're going to have impact here if we do this project, I think it's worth asking the question, because it's not only just for traffic reasons that we have, have that open. So, I guess that's the question I have here. And I've got another one that I know was asked inside of the packet around what's the most environmentally safe approach to take with this intersection, and so I wanted to get comment on that, too.
Mr. Rezak and Ms. Long, was there other consideration of, of closing one of our streets that, about Old Chocopee Road, something like Xerxes?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, there wasn't consideration of that. And Hennepin County is always a proponent of closing access to their facilities if, if they think it's reasonable. I would agree with Councilmember Loman that I think the proximity of Fire Station Two and the response time probably influences that. And anytime you close an access in a traffic situation, it doesn't mean that those cars disappear. It means that they reallocate themselves to other facilities, and we're not sure exactly where, what routes they would take. So, we may be trading one problem for a different problem.
And Councilmember Loman, your other question?
My other question, before we get to the other question, help me also understand this 98th Street in Penn piece, too. Because I still, in my mind, you know, other folks out here have asked, why, why can't we do on 98th Street in Penn and do that here in this intersection? That doesn't make sense to me. Help me understand that.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, I'll take a stab at it, since Mr. Rezak took an earlier stab. One of the issues that we will have is that it has an increased cycle length for the traffic signal. So, the amount of time that people have to sit and wait to make their movement would increase, because we're not allowing the lefts on both Old Chocopee Road to go at the same time. I'm sure council has gotten complaints when we have our side street stops from other residents where the delays, it appears really long. And so, we are, we're concerned with the increased volumes on Old Chocopee Road, that the cycle length would get really long, and people on the side streets. So, if you can combine those movements at the same time, it reduces the delay by half. And so, that is what was the factor into why we want to add a left turn lane.
So, that's for, basically, it's for speed and the queuing there that you'd have on, especially Xerxes, southbound, that queue would, would literally go all the way past 106th Street in some occasions, if you did what we did on 98th and Penn. That's what I'm hearing you say, for example.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, I think we're talking about the same thing, because you said speed, and speed in an engineering world means like 35 miles an hour. That's not the speed we're talking about. We're talking about the time that you're sitting at a signal, or the time of delay that you're waiting for the light to turn green, yellow, red, and get service a second time. So, I think we're talking about the same thing.
We're talking about the same thing. No, I just, I expanded on you there, sorry about that. So, you answered my question, and I took it at a different place, so, yeah. Sustainability with vehicle, is this more sustainable than what we currently have?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, we do believe it is, because people are not sitting in the through lane waiting for service, so there's less car pollution. Is it significant? It is not. But it is a small step in the right direction, but it is not significant.
Would there be an alternative that would be more sustainable, that would have less impact on the neighborhood?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Loman, we are not aware of one, as Mr. Rezak went over earlier. The roundabout is a good alternative in a lot of locations. Unfortunately, that is not a location at this particular spot where it would be a good alternative. So, in, Darren used the example up in Richfield, where the volumes on all four legs are pretty much the same. So, people don't have to stop and wait for a gap to access the roundabout. So, in those cases, a roundabout is much more sustainable. In this particular case, because of the unbalanced volumes, we don't have an option at this time that we believe is more sustainable.
Councilmember Loman, I just want to interrupt you here. I think we're getting into council discussion at a time when we're trying to do.
Yeah, Mayor, and I want to apologize for that. I realize we were getting into that as I asked that, as your question, I apologize for that.
Not a problem, not a problem. Just want to make sure we have a chance to hear everybody's concerns or questions that they would have, the folks who are here this evening. So, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? You going to come forward, or no? Okay. Ms. Chaney, is there anyone on the phone who would like to speak on this?
Nora, do we have any callers?
Uh, there are no callers on the via-Phone line. You may proceed.
Okay, Nora, that is the last of our public comment, so you can disconnect.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? Please.
Should I sign in again?
If you would, please.
Okay. I'll see if I can talk and sign at the same time for all of us. I live in that area up of 106th, and I'm just reminded of the long discussion about having an additional on-ramp and an alternative route for folks getting onto 35W, going through the theoretical overland, or overlooked drive area. I'm sure we all remember that. And I just want to, I just want to speak on behalf of the folks who spoke tonight, property owners who are going to be impacted by this, because it just seems to me that this trickled down from being a complaint from one group of property owners to now a complaint from another group of property owners. And so, I don't really see how, how the property owners impacted by this really deserve that. It seems to me that the issue that is causing these problems, these accidents, are, we've, we've heard tonight mentions of speed, we've heard tonight mentions of people not paying attention when they're turning left. We've heard a lot of reasons for these accidents that have nothing to do with these property owners, who literally are having this dumped in their front yard. So, so just as, as their neighbor, I don't live in that intersection. I live over on 106th and Queen, but I drive it every day, and it's not my favorite intersection by any means. But I do absolutely believe if you have to do this, I, I recognize that there, there's compensation involved for the property owners impacted, but if you, if you've done everything you can do for them, and there is not an alternative, please try to do a little more for my neighbors. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Colter. If there's no one else, or if there is, please come forward. Please, yep, please, otherwise we'll, otherwise we're going to move on, and I want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak who would like to speak.
I probably shouldn't be talking here. I don't live here anymore in that, but I used to live on Xerxes Old Chocopee, the corner that you took my yard from. My wife's folks had that house built there, so that house has been in the family up and for 50-some years until we, after they passed away, we lived there. We moved there. A lot of changes have been done there. One of them was 110th Street when they, when they put in, 106th Street when they put in. That was supposed to be, no trucks allowed on that. It was not made for trucks. The bridges weren't supposed to be not made for trucks on that. But all of a sudden, we've got big dump trucks going through there. Now, every kind of truck, Maggiore goes through there. First thing is they took the corner away from my folks' place and that, and it just, just don't seem right. I, like I say, I probably shouldn't be the one talking, because I don't live there anymore, but just the thought of it, if I did, I'd really be mad, I think.
Thank you for your comments. And I'm sorry, if you could, I don't know if we got your name officially for the record, if you could tell us your name.
Larry Berquist.
Thank you, Mr. Berquist. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Anyone else? If not, council, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing tonight.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion by Councilmember Loman, and a second by Councilmember Martin to close the public hearing on this item. Hearing no further, council discussion. Mr. Brillhart.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye. Motion carries 7-0 to close the public hearing. So, council, we've, we've kind of interspersed some commentary and some questions and some thoughts on this, as we've worked our way through the questions and the public hearing here. Any additional thoughts or comments? How we would like to move forward on this, or how we would like to look at this? Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, a quick one for Julie. You mentioned, and I just want to clarify this, because I was the one who asked about, you know, comparisons to other intersections. Did you bring up Old Cedar and Old Chocopee just sort of by virtue as a, as a comparison, to say that it is also an intersection that has similar crash issues? Or is that, I mean, is that within a roughly similar order of magnitude, magnitude to this, this particular intersection? Does that question make any sense at all?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, I will try my best to answer what I think I heard you ask, and if not, we can correct that. I brought it up, the intersection of Old Chocopee Road and Old Cedar, because it also has a significant accident issue. It is not identical, but it does have a lot of similar characteristics, where it has a lot of unbalanced volumes. In this, in the particular case of that intersection, it is the westbound to northbound movement, which is significant, as opposed to anyone trying to go south. So, it is not 100% identical, but it does have a crash problem. It does not have dedicated turn lanes, and so that was why I brought it up. So, hopefully that makes sense. Did I answer your question?
You got very close, and I suspect you didn't get all the way there, because I asked it in an extremely poor way. My, the second part to my question is such that you're able to answer tonight, in terms of the number of crashes, are, is that a similar, or, you know, number, or maybe even percentage in terms of traffic volume? Is that, is that a similar intersection to Old, Old Chocopee and Xerxes? Or, I mean, how does that compare numerically? I asked it so poorly, she disappeared.
I think we've lost.
Wow.
So, Mr. Rezak, I think we'll, if you're not able to answer that question, if you don't have those numbers at your fingertips tonight, I guess I wouldn't be surprised. But if, if perhaps we could follow up with that and maybe provide some of that information.
Yeah, I, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Council, additional questions, comments? If not?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Baloga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Rezak, were there any looks at what banning rush-hour turns from Old Chocopee to, you know, the left turn movements, both AM and PM? Was that looked as an alternative?
Uh, Councilmember Baloga, Mr. Mayor, that, restricting the, I guess, turning movements in, in any direction on either Xerxes and Old Choc, was not investigated as part of the, as part of the grant application. But I do understand what you're talking about, and you see the, the signs in, in various communities restricting that, those turning movements at certain time periods in the morning and then the afternoon.
How long would it take us to do an analysis of restricted time turn options? And add that to the idea of, you know, doing something like that in lieu of a proposed project?
Uh, Councilmember Baloga, Mr. Mayor, I would have to speak with our, I guess, our traffic engineering about implementing some type of, of study to kind of take into effect of what you had described there.
So, probably taking a wild guess, three to six months.
Uh, Councilmember Baloga, yeah, it would be, you know, a significant timeframe to, to put that together, to, you know, gather the data, and then, you know, interpret it in a, in a way that, you know, we could use for a future project.
And what, what's the approximate distance between Xerxes and Penn on Old Chocopee? It's, I suspect it's about three-quarters of a mile to a mile, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Councilmember Baloga, if you give me, give me a, a quick second here, I will Google Maps that. Uh, Councilmember Baloga, Mr. Mayor, we're at about 3,500 feet from, from Xerxes Avenue to Penn Avenue.
About three-quarters of a mile, so, um, what, is there a standard for having cross-traffic routes on a major thoroughfare as far as spacing of distances?
Councilmember Baloga, are you, are you talking about the distance between two major intersections, as in Xerxes and Penn on Old Chocopee?
Uh, well, no, what I'm, I'm trying to get to is there a standard for the spacing of, on a major thoroughfare between cross-street intersections for traffic? Because you've got to the north, you've got France, then you've got Xerxes, then you've got Penn, right? So, if we did eliminate, what would the impacts approximately be, knowing that there isn't a study?
Uh, Councilmember Baloga, I don't know if we, if, if we did some type of restriction on, on Xerxes Avenue for those turning movements, without doing a, you know, a, kind of an in-depth traffic study as to where that other traffic goes, I don't know if we could put together, I guess, a number that we'd be comfortable with presenting.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Well, council, I think we've talked through this and looked at different possibilities. I think different alternatives were presented. I don't know if, how they would affect the, the financing, the financial aspect of this, the federal grant that we have available and the Hennepin County money. and the Hennepin County money. I know it's probably not a perfect solution, but in terms of the safety, I think I would see this as something that would certainly improve the safety in that area. As someone who has made that turn from east to north, that's, it can be nerve-wracking to have folks coming up behind you or trying to cut across those, those two lanes of traffic, so, I would, I would look for motion, I just want to say, I think I, I would be in favor of this, I understand that there would be impact on properties, I understand that there would be the compensation to offset that, understanding that they would replace the, the fencing and underground sprinklers, the trees, absolutely, it's not going to be a one-to-one replacement because you can't replace a sixty-year-old tree, I get that, I understand that, but I think from, just from a safety perspective and a traffic flow perspective, this seems to make some good sense, and so, I'll be supporting it. Others, if, if you have thoughts on it, or if we want to take action on this in one way or the other. Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor, you know, I, as I, as I look at this, this, this intersection, number of things kind of come to mind, and first I want to kind of address those folks who are, you know, are having their, their property impacted, you know, there's nothing quite like that, and I know, Mayor, you, you talked about it, and, and so I just think it behooves us to, to do as much as we can possibly do to try to make sure that there's any way possible to try to reduce that impact for those property owners, that we do that. You know, staff has come forward and they said that they've, they've looked at a number of different things, the only thing I've heard here tonight, that, that restriction around turn lanes does sound interesting to me, to, to try to look at that, if there is a way for us to look at that, because if there's a way to, I mean, I mean, I hear the stories of the history here, folks kind of came here and, and they talk about when, you know, when this was, you know, two lane going one way, and then they got taken again, and then the turn lane got taken again, and, and so I'm just wondering if we're, you know, we're doing a slow bite and eventually we get to a point where we just take it all, and so I just wonder if it makes some sense, you know, certainly I'm supportive of trying to do this, you know, I know it's not realistic to think we're going to close down any, any roads because of the public safety standpoint of this, but if there is this last ditch opportunity to kind of have a look at a restricted turn, that would have less of an impact, and I know we were talking about, you know, around our priorities of slowing down traffic, if this is a realistic way to kind of do that, because we look at the accident profile of this, and some of these things, you know, I have the question too, that, that residents have as well, around that, that impact, you know, is it because of distracted driving? Is it because, you know, traffic is moving too quickly? So, I would feel better in supporting this if we would consider what councilmember Baloga has put forward, to see if there's any possibility that that might work, I recognize it may not, and then we're right back where we're at today, but I just think it behooves us to look, you know, to, to have this one last look for these residents who have lived here and been taxpayers for a long time, and so, that's what I would ask, if, if council would be open to that, but I, I do think, Mayor, you've stated well, it's here, we've got the, the safety data's here, they've looked at other things, I'm just asking for one last look here.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor, well, I, you know, to, to pick on, pick up on, excuse me, a couple of things that councilmember Lohman mentioned, you know, I, I think restricting left turns is an intriguing idea, I think it, it is absolutely something worth exploring, and, you know, knowing that the plans and specs would still have to come back to us, I'm hopeful that, that, that that can be done, that there can be, that we will have time to, to evaluate that fully, and, you know, I've, I've heard from a number of neighbors about this, I think I was even at a couple of your doors a few weeks ago, and, you know, it, you know, I, I think barring something like that, that left turn restriction, you know, Mayor, like you said, this is, this is an imperfect solution, and I would, I would go so far as to say to, to the folks who are here tonight and neighbors watching at home, yeah, it's incredibly unfair that, that this happens to your property that you bought, you know, many years ago, and, and I'm sure all good upstanding citizens and, and pay your taxes and cross at the green and all of that, and it's, it is unfair that, that this is, is what has to happen, but I, I think, you know, I live probably closer than anyone else on this council to that intersection, I live on Upton, just about a block north of Old Chocapi, so I, I drive that intersection literally every day, anytime I want to go anywhere, basically, and I, you know, I've seen some close calls and I've been in some close calls with, with those left turns, so I, I get it, and that, that is a real safety issue, so, I think if we can, if we can look at the, the, the turn restrictions, I, you know, I think that does make a lot of sense, I, I'd be curious how that would work with the traffic volumes on Old Chocapi, I'm, I'm a little unsure how that would, that would affect any backups and that kind of thing. It, it is not a perfect solution, in this world, perfect solutions very rarely exist, and, and in my, now almost four years on the council, I've found that one place in which that is particularly true is traffic and, and street design and, and all of that, there are just almost never perfect solutions that satisfy everyone, so barring that left turn restriction, I, I think this is the, the best solution we have, but certainly I get it from the, the folks who live nearby, it's, it's hardly a good one, and, and to Mr. Coet's point, you know, I, I hope we can go even above and beyond and, and do what we can to, to not only compensate folks, but, but just provide the, the information and access and all of the things that folks need to feel like they, they can and should have in the community.
Mr. Rezak, I think you mentioned it earlier, or at least it was discussed earlier, is there a sunset on this funding, this federal funding and Hennepin County funding?
Mr. Mayor, I'm currently jabbering with Julie Long, our city engineer, and she does believe that we could push this project to 2023, I do just want to reiterate that, that Old Chocapi Road is under Hennepin County jurisdiction, so restricting those turning movements or, you know, anything along those lines, we would have to get buy-in from them, and they would be ultimately the ones that would, you know, be, be responsible for that intersection, or for the traffic signal, I should say.
Understood. Counsel, additional thoughts? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, just, just real quickly, I, if it's, I'm only hesitant on a study because if it's going to take three to six months, how much more staff time costs, is that going to add on top of this project? So, that's, that's kind of on my mind, but it, it does sound like, we, we've got the data that shows this is going to have a pretty substantial impact on crashes, and reducing crashes at major intersections feels like one of the chief responsibilities of a city. So, so, yeah, some, some serious impacts here that should be compensated, that should absolutely be offset, but to the point you raised earlier, Mayor, pairing this with a robust conversation about how we reduce the other, just under fifty percent of crashes that aren't attributed to these turn lanes, is something that I'd like to move pretty aggressively on down the line, so, I, I'm in favor of, of moving forward on this, I would just hate to spend all this time to come around and reach the same conclusion in six months.
So, counsel, where do we stand on this then? Does somebody want to make a motion? Councilmember Lohman?
Well, I'll give it a shot, and what I'll do is, I'll go ahead and add my amendment in there, and we'll see what happens, and if that doesn't happen, then we'll, we'll see what, what happens with that, so, I'll go ahead and move to adopt a resolution to enclose the feasibility report and adopt a resolution to order improvements for Xerxes Avenue and Old Chocapi Road intersection improvement project with consideration of a turn restriction.
Second?
Yeah. You mean a timed turn restriction?
Yeah, timed turn, yeah, thanks for the clarity there.
And do we need more clarity than that in terms of timed turn restriction?
Mayor members, but what I understand, the, the motion to be is that there would be staff consideration of a timed, time-restricted turn, is that accurate?
Yeah, yeah.
So, we have a motion by councilmember Lohman, I think councilmember Coulter with a second. Discussion on this, counsel? Councilmember Baloga?
I'm not quite sure how this would operate, could somebody help me understand?
I'm not quite sure myself, councilmember Baloga, I, I think the, the, the general idea here, I think the direction is that, to, to move approval of what we have in front of us based on or contingent on a, a study of timed turns, a timed left-hand turn at that intersection, and the feasibility of it, the, I don't know, the cost ramifications, whether or not we can get approval from Hennepin County, all those different pieces of the puzzle that have to come into.
Yeah, if any one of those things, let's say, for example, Hennepin County absolutely wouldn't do it without the ends of that, and then we'd have to move on, so that, that'd be the way I would look at it, let staff kind of, I mean, figure out what the spirit of it would be, if there's a problem with it, then we'd just, it'd be, be over and we'd move to this, but I, I just, it's just that one last look to see if there's something, and I'm not sure that I'm interested in pushing this out to 2023, that, that's not, I mean, maybe that, I don't think that's reasonable either, so, I, I don't think I could support something that would push this out that far.
Ms. Long, I see your hand up, then we'll get to your question and your comment, councilmember Nelson. Julie, can you chime in on this?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Baloga, I'm not going to turn on my video just in case that was the issue, but as far as the timed restriction, we have an example on Normandale Boulevard, if you're headed southbound and you want to turn eastbound into Toledo Road, so I think that would be a good example of what you're looking at, so during certain times of the day, we don't allow people to make that movement, so that would be what we would look at.
Ms. Keel?
Mayor, counsel, maybe if I could make a suggestion, I would suggest that the motion directs staff to investigate the ramifications of such a movement and to report back as, before we do the plans and specifications, and that, yeah, the council would then make a decision whether to proceed with plan and specs or order further study.
I think that's a sound suggestion. Councilmember Lohman?
Absolutely for that, as long as my secondary would be okay with that.
So, well, don't go, don't go far, Carl, we're probably going to have to repeat that so we can write this down.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, what I heard Mr. Keel say is that the motion, and I understood the motioners to understand it this way too, is that, that plans and specifications would not be ordered until staff reported back on the potential timed turn restriction, and so, I guess the only question is how long staff thinks it'll take to do that and when we could expect to see that come back.
Mayor, and, and the only other thing I would say is, or barring that Hennepin County would not allow us to do it, it's not what to kill it immediately.
Yeah, I think that would be part of that initial investigation, because I don't want that to hold us up, you know, if that's just as they say. I'm assuming that would be part of the initial investigation. Let me get to councilmember Nelson first and then councilmember Carter, councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor, and appreciate the effort of my colleagues to figure out some alternatives here to address the concerns of residents in that area, I think it's good. One of the things, and I don't want to make the motion longer, but one of the things that I think would be important to consider is unforeseen impacts, as an example, if you can't take a left-hand turn off of Xerxes, would you just go up Vincent and take a left-hand turn at an uncontrolled intersection and cause more problems? Or things of that nature, and I have confidence that staff would look at that type of stuff, but I think a comment was made earlier that, you know, if we do something like this, it doesn't get rid of that traffic, it maybe moves it somewhere else and creates a different problem. The secondary thing that I think we need to make sure we keep front and center, and again, I don't know if it's to this motion, so, but, Mayor, I think you were absolutely spot on that this highlights the conversation we were talking about earlier in terms of traffic within our community and highlights the issues of, one, cut-through traffic, the reality is a lot of this traffic going through that intersection is not Bloomington residents, it's not Bloomington businesses, it's not people going to patronize our Bloomington businesses, it's people trying to get to Edina, and they want to get off of thirty-five, they don't want to deal with four ninety-four, and they're cutting through our city to do this off of a hundred and sixth, and, and, and things of that nature, and I know we had a very unfortunate situation a year or two ago when there was a fatality just north of this location with what I believe was some cut-through traffic, not a delivery in a neighborhood, and so, I mean, those are extremely significant issues, I don't think it says we don't do this project, because I think there's merit given the accident history and the reality of how that intersection is used, but I think this issue really highlights those issues throughout the community, so I appreciate you bringing that up, Mayor.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor, he actually asked one of my questions, so, I'm good, thank you.
Very good. So, Ms. Manderschek, could you read the, the motion back to us as we have it in its current state, please?
Thank you, I appreciate the challenge. Motion by Lohman, seconded by Coulter to adopt resolution number 2021 to approve the enclosed feasibility report and adopt a resolution to order improvements for Xerxes Avenue and Old Chocapi Road CSAH one intersection improvement project with staff consideration of a timed turn restricted, with a time-restricted turn, with the condition that they report back to council before council consideration of possible approval of plans and specifications.
I think that sounds right, the only thing that I might suggest then is a, a, by, do-by date, and, I don't know, Mr. Rezak, Ms. Long, Carl, I mean, what, what would be a reasonable time for the staff to bring a report back like that so the council can either say yes or no, we want to continue this, down this road, or no, let's do what we got in front of us tonight?
Mayor, I think Darren or Julie can answer the timing for when we would anticipate having the plans and specs back, and we would prepare a, a report to you about the staff's perception of the benefits and disadvantages of a turn lane restriction there, or turn, left-turn restriction there, it would probably not include a full-blown traffic study, that would be not, not enough time to do that, but, and it would be up to you to decide whether you felt that our staff analysis was adequate or not.
Mr. Rezak, Ms. Long, when would the staff analysis, what, what would be a reasonable time for that?
Mr. Mayor, I would, I guess, couldn't provide an answer, maybe Julie can right now, but I do have, tentatively, our next council action would be to approve the plans and specs and set the bidding schedule, and we currently have that in the schedule right now for February of 2022, is when the plans and specs would be back before council.
So, six months out, you think, for a staff analysis of this? The questions being asked here tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I think that'd be a, a good estimate, yes.
Very good. All right. Counsel, do we understand what's in front of us here, the, the motion that has been made? Is there any further discussion? So, we have a motion and a second, and the, the motion, as our city attorney just read it not too long ago, and with the understanding that it would be early next year, the first quarter of next year before we would get the staff report back, all right? Hearing no further, council discussion on this matter? Mr. Brillhart.
Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussey.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. So, we will hear back on this item, probably in, oh, in, do we want to do the just compensation, assuming that even with the, okay, we want to do that? All right, then I will look for a motion. Councilmember Lohman?
I'll go ahead and move to authorize and direct staff to set just compensation and make an offer for easement acquisition for Xerxes Avenue and Old Chocapi Road intersection improvement project.
Second? We have a motion by councilmember Lohman, seconded by councilmember Martin to authorize staff to set just compensation. Hearing no further, council discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, councilmember Baloga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, how, how does this operate? Does, does this give staff approval to go and acquire the land, or to just begin to make offers subject to the final approval in item that we just voted on?
The, the verbiage that I'm reading here is to set just compensation and make offers, I don't think it says, you know, make the, finalize the transaction, I don't think that would be reasonable to finalize the transaction. I don't think that would be reasonable to finalize the transaction if we were still up in the air in terms of the, what direction we're going here. But, Mr. Rezak?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Beloga, that is correct. So the table that was included in the agenda packet for those seven parcels, so that dollar amount in there is from the report that the appraiser had completed. So what we're requesting is council, I guess, acknowledge the dollar amounts that are in there. And then that's the basis for our negotiations with those seven parcel owners. So if the motion carries, then we will use the figures that are in there, and that's where we begin our negotiations with property owners.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate the information.
Additional questions?
Yes.
I, I, I'm sorry, we're, this is specifically to the council, I don't know that we can...
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, I apologize. I think we can answer questions outside this, but we're, as we have a motion on the table, I think we have to move forward with what we have. We can try and get to the questions later, so we will do that. We do have a motion and a second for just compensation. Any further questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Beloga?
Is this also a public hearing?
The public, no, the public hearing was on seven, this is a resolution, or a motion within 7.3. We've had the public hearing on item 7.3.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Brillhart?
Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Now, if you have a specific question, I would recommend the gentleman right to your left, Carl Keel, is our Public Works Director. Perhaps if you took your conversation out front, he could probably answer just about any question you would have on this project, so he'd be happy to do so. You're welcome. Thank you. Let's move to item eight, our organizational business this evening, and item 8.1, which is a discussion under our facility needs and our capital improvement project funding. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Our chief financial officer, Lori Economy Schuler, is going to walk us through this item. What we're really looking for as a result of this discussion is just general understanding from the council about where we're at on our CIP and our future funding, how we go about, you know, achieving our goal here of meeting our facility needs. And specifically, maybe responding to some recommendations here on how we may accomplish that over the next couple of years. Lori?
Ms. Economy Schuler?
Mayor and council, just to start the conversation, a lot of our data that we're utilizing is from the '21 through 2030 CIP, and then we've inflated the numbers in some instances. So in this piece, I did give hard copies to the council members in chambers, but I just wanted to go through, I know you have a Parkmaster Plan coming forward in a few weeks. What we plotted out here in the charter bond area, and specifically in the CIP, is I only pulled out bonding-related projects. If they're projects for utilities that are not, where we're utilizing fee-based revenues or that type of thing for the capital improvements, they are not part of tonight's discussion. So it is only where we would have charter bonds, capital improvement bonds, or probably permanent improvement bonds, and then should the council move forward at some future date with local option sales tax. So the first piece is that we look at park and rec projects, and looking at here, we put them in, and as you see, that number is a lot smaller tonight, that you voted on earlier, and just over $2 million. But we have projects here moving at $4 million every other year, and we had them group them in that kind of dollar amount, so it made more bonding sense, so that if the investors like a larger dollar amount to make bids on. And then we just inflated the numbers as we go through the years for the park and rec projects. And then we looked at the CIP bonds. CIP bonds are normally your public safety, public works bonds. And so, currently looking at fire restriction fours build out at 11 million, hopefully that's a high estimate. And then again, we've inflated those, and we put them every other year. And that was what the spacing was in the CIP, along with the spacing for our public works number. Carl said that's this number of 26 million for animal shelter and the public works garage. Not certain if they're going to be together or in different locations, but those numbers still look good. In the permanent improvement area, we have a consistent pattern, and that is the pattern that they have put together for me and inflated it, and that's been in the CIP for a number since the early 90s. So just in those areas of those three bonding types, we are looking over this 10-year period at $186 million. The total for the fire stations and public works was 81 million, park and rec at 17.5, and PMP at 87. So, that 187, when I look at our 1% market value amount that we can utilize, just putting in these projects here, utilize pretty much the cap that we can utilize for these, if I just looked at these bonds, the, let's see, these two ones that count as the 1%, we're getting close to 100 million. Right now, when we look at the city's market value, we're at 15 billion, so we would, our cap would be at 150 million outstanding at any one time. So hopefully, we don't ever get there, but if we start bringing up some of the projects that are below the line, we could get closer to that number.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interject, Lori, is it okay if I interrupt? I just want to be clear about what the 1% number is that you're referencing. And this is the requirement for the city as it pertains to charter bonds. We call them charter bonds because the Charter Commission approved this change in the charter several years ago to allow the council to issue debt. And state statute allows us to go up to 3% of the city's tax base, market value. And the Charter Commission wanted a more conservative number for the council-issued debt. And so they set that at 1%. So when the CFO is referring to that 1% number, that's the limitation that was set by the Charter Commission several years ago.
Back in 2016. So it's a recent thing, and before that, we had no ability really to issue debt for any park and rec project. So when we looked at, just pulling out some of the projects that were in the CIP that might have regional significance, we looked at the Dwan Clubhouse bunker and fencing, that's at 13.3 in the CIP. The big amount that the council looked at, several of the Bloomington Ice Garden project pieces earlier this spring, and we put a state bonding request in for $28 million. We won't know until May, June of next year whether any of that is approved or not. Similar to public health, and that 17 million that's for the public health building is within that $65 million for the creekside replacement. That does not include any land. If we need to move the location to some other location on transit, that 65 million does not include any land acquisition. And then currently for the BCA expansion, that is at $33 million. Highland Greens is on there, just as I was including one golf, I put both golfs on there. We have, when you look at the total here, $145 million of projects. When we looked at local option sales tax, that the city manager walked that council through two meetings ago, the cap that we could issue was approximately 150 million. So, and we can only have five projects. So just putting five projects out there, they can be swapped, they can be moved around, but just putting this together as an example. So are there any questions on this before I move to the more complicated debt schedules?
So this, you're using this as an example?
Just as an illustration of how I cut the debt to build the tables.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
I'm just gonna, not making this busy.
Mayor and council, before Ms. Economy Schuler gets deeper into this spreadsheet, because there's a lot of content in this spreadsheet, I want to encourage you to ask questions as we go. Lori walked through this with our executive leadership team, and, you know, we deal with these numbers quite often, and we still had a lot of questions, so don't hesitate to ask as we go.
So, let's see. Actually, I want to start with the next one. This is where the total levy is at 5%. So, in this illustration, so it's just an illustration. So the levy, 5% every year for the next 10 years, just to illustrate how we can bond and do these pieces. So if the operating levies stayed at 3.5%, and then the capital and bonding amount each year, we designate at least 1.5% of the tax levy towards existing debt and then just future capital. So just looking at the math, 3.5 divided by the 5 gives you 70% of the, each levy increase would go towards operating levy, 1.5% for capital over the total 5 would give us 30%. And then in the modeling that I did, I preserved the PMP debt levy that we need each year going out for the next 10 years, and I, so in that stream every year for PMP, that was preserved. So we cover our PMP before we looked at facilities and parks. If the bond structure were for parks and it was a charter bond, that was a 10-year structure, and if we built a facility, it was a 20-year bond structure. And I know we had a great interest rate today, but in 10 years from now, I don't know what that interest rate will be. I don't know what the interest rate will be in March. So I just did an average of looking at our past 10-year history and came with a 2.75. So in all the models, the interest rate remained exactly the same at 2.75. So then, we start building the model. Let's move this up. So for 2021, our tax levy is 66.5 million. I rounded it. And we broke that up with 61 million going to operations and 5.5 going to debt service. Again, just keeping the round numbers to start with. And if we have a zero levy for 2022, because the debt is going up and we're, we just issued debt today, and we have our PMP debt, I'm going to need 700,000, which is approximately a 1%. So when we move that 1%, we got to subtract out of operations to move it to debt. So you see the operations going down. And then I just started adding that 5% each year. The net change, which is the 5% net increase, so 66 million to 69 million, 3.3 million. And it breaks up, 70% of that 3.3 million came to operations, and 30% went to debt. And that's how this part broke down. Any questions on this section?
Thank you. Can you just repeat what you said about the 1% where you pointed to the green box?
So I'm going to just write right on there.
Yeah.
So that's a 700,000 increase. So if you look at the 66.5 and did 1% of that, that's $665,000. And I'm just rounding again, that's about a 1.06 that got us there.
Got it. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, that's basically the increment of tax levy increase, right? And so our base levy is at 66.5, 1% would be an increase of $665,000.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. This modeling on the debt levy, does that assume that the items included right now in sales tax revenue bonds are possible local option sales tax? Are those included in there, or that would be?
No, no, I'm just building this, and I'm starting to put just the CIP and charter bonds and PMP bonds in there.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
None of the projects that are, that were below the line for local option sales tax were included in these models.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, ready?
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Quick question, so you modeled this with 2.75% interest rate. We just did one at 1%. Now, obviously, we don't know where it's going to be in the future. Unlikely that it'll be significantly lower. We're at pretty darn low rates now. And costs on projects tend to go up over time, oftentimes increasing at above inflationary rates. So I guess the gist of my question is, is there advantage? And have you looked at modeling, moving some of these projects up to do them at lower cost and at a lower financing cost? And what does that long-term model look like if we did it that way?
Mayor and councilmember, when we looked at this, we looked at, with the incremental increases in inflation and pulling it back, what we were trying to do with the model is keep the debt, excuse me, the total tax levy in a reasonable or smaller amount. The council at times has done a 5.75 for a number of years back in the, back a while, but, you know, these are 5% increases, and we didn't want to put huge numbers out there by, I mean, you still have to pay for this, even, you know, I mean, when we think about the fire station, when we first were modeling a number for fire station four, it was at 8.5 million. And now, as we're looking at steel costs and all the other pieces, it's closer to 11. So just moving it forward doesn't always help.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, Lori's correct, and we did also talk about a couple of possibilities. One is that we would potentially do a larger bond now when money is cheaper. There, there's a problem with that, though, is that with capital debt when we issue it, we have to initiate the projects that are being paid for with that debt within a certain period of time. So we can't, you can't sort of bank that money until the project comes around. And that begs the second question, well, why don't you just do all the projects together? And that just comes down to a staffing capacity issue, right? We can only manage a certain number of projects unless there's a commitment to doing that, in which case we'd have to just ramp up our construction management capability here to accomplishment. And that only has its limitations, it has its limitations, because with the, with the two primary projects that are being funded here, the fire station replacements, we're having to take those fire stations out of service because there are tear downs and rebuilds on site. We're not putting them in new locations. So the ability to do more than one of those at a time is infeasible, right? So we have to phase those. And then with the park and recreation projects, this 4 million every other year is an approximation of the implementation plan for reinvestment coming from the park system master plan, right? And so there's a concern about, we'd probably have a couple of $2 million projects, or maybe one large $4 million projects, but I think there's a pretty high expectation on community engagement. And so we want to be able to give ourselves ample time to do community engagement in between those projects. So, yes, it's possible we could... So yes, it's possible we could do a larger issue and say we're going to do a serious commitment to our park system master plan and do a whole bunch of projects at once. And again, it's just a staffing capacity and community engagement capacity to get those projects done.
Okay, I'll move on to the next section. So in this column here, what we would have is all of our current debt that's outstanding as of the end of the year. So and how we need to pay that and issue the tax levy for that at 105%. Those are what is in our binding documents that we are required to levy for and pay for. As of today, I get to change and reduce these amounts. So that's a good thing. And then this is based off of the PMP amounts that have been given to me by Public Works in our, in our CIP and what the debt service is needed on each and every one of those annual amounts. So this column here, K, is just the subtotal of these columns here to equal this one. Any questions on this section?
Mr. Mayor?
House Member Belogga?
Lori, just, just for clarification with that $4 million every other year for the Parks Master Plan, that did not include, the Parks Master Plan does not include funding for the normal reconstruction of the parks, you know, the playground equipment and so on. If I recall the Parks Master Plan, is that, am I recalling that correctly?
My general, Mayor and Councilmember Belogga, my general understanding from the Park and Rec Director is that $4 million would include everything. It would include the facilities in those locations. It would include the parks, playgrounds, signage. It would include everything that parks needs to enhance what they have and make it, you know, renew them.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the next section. So on this piece, I'm going to go this direction now. And I'm just going to go, we're going to, we're going to just keep it simple, easy. That's even better idea. We'll only go down a little bit here. So we're going to start with K, column K. And what column L is now, I look over here at column F, that 8 million, and we'll use 2024 projects here. Let's just start at the beginning, 2023. So in 2023, it's now, the debt service levy has now increased and it's received 30% of the 3.3 million total amount that we'd be levying and set aside for debt levy and capital. And I'll round it, 7.2 million. We need to subtract out our existing debt, which is 6.5 million. So I have at this time 652,000 available for other projects. So what I did here is here's a project at 11 million, 2% cost of issuance at 11.2. And just using the payment formula within the system, we've calculated what that would be at the, utilizing, let's see, fire station, you have 20 years, 2.75. And then utilizing that, we also have to increase that by 105% for the required state debt service amount that we have to levy for at 105%. So that would be $773,000 a year that we would pay for the fire station. And that's down there and it follows all the way down. So if we issued that total amount, we've now used more than what we have. But hopefully the project comes down a little and we can afford that. If not, we'll have to find another source to pay for that, 121. Moving down to the next year. So the 5% levy now gives us 3.5 million. The amount for debt is now 8.3. The total that's existing and outstanding, existing 2021 charter bonds and 20, and the PMP, because there's 6.9. We now have available 1.3 million. So you see here, we have a little bit more here that we could absorb, the negative above. And that 4 million park projects, 2% cost of issuance, utilizing the formula in the system, gives us $495,000 for the payment for that levy. We now have a little extra that we can store for the future debt of 71,000. So in these two years where we have CIP bonds and park charter bonds, are there questions? I'm a finance person and I love spreadsheets. So you're going to have to follow on your screens or with the paper copies you have because we're going to start missing the lines. So we're in 2025. So it goes the same way all the way through. And, you know, when I look at 2025, the amount that's available for the garage is at 1,190,000. But when I look at what I need for both a garage and animal control up here at 100, 1.8 million and what I would need for parks, I don't have enough to fund both of those in that year. So I'd come down here and they're both there. So I'm really short by 493. So when I use that, I can't, I can't issue debt in 2025. I have to wait to 2026 to issue the debt for those two pieces.
Mayor, if I could ask a question on that one then?
House Member Loman?
So then if you don't, if you don't issue it that year, then you push that project, you know, out? Or how does that work then?
So I wouldn't issue it in the T year. I would issue it in this year. And so that money, the 1,190,000, do you see where we have that available? It comes and it's available to be here to offset. So when I do issue that next year, that for, I'll call it, round it up to 500,000, I'm using that 1.90 to, to pay for that $500,000 extra piece that I need.
No, I'm following you. Thank you, yeah.
So I, I tried to maximize what I could in each year. And in some years, hopefully, we won't have to issue that much. But in some where it's almost 500,000. I had to push that out. And it goes all the way through until we issue the last fire station, six, in 2030 for the levy in '31. So we're down there and at that point, we've got quite a bit built up. You know, when I looked at all of those together, you know, there's several years of negatives throughout and they get absorbed. And, you know, by building it, we have flexibility 10 years from now to do more projects. But between now and then, it's a year-by-year basis of what the council, what the valuation changes are and what the, really what the council might want to do in those years. This was just illustrating if we did a 5% each year. And if we can keep operations at 3.5% and carve out another 1.5 for debt.
Mr. Brugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. And just building off Lori's last point there, you know, we had to, for modeling purposes, we had to pick a number, right? So I just want to repeat the mantra for the night, this is for illustration purposes, right? I don't want anybody to watch, watching this at home to think that this is a fait accompli. But what we did need to do is model out how we are going to move through our CIP in a way that still keeps these projects on schedule. You know, the point that I want to make about the items that are on this list, these are, these are the larger facility needs, the ones that we're likely to need to issue debt for. Smaller projects, you know, if you go into our CIP, there's a whole bunch of other projects in there. Most of those get funded through the facility fund, which we budget for on a regular basis, okay? Or there are a lot of projects in there that have other revenue sources, right? So these are just the ones that would be utilizing the general tax levy. So how do we stay on track? The one thing I want people to know when we're talking about these projects, especially the ones that are above the, the green subtotal line, the ones that are charter bonds, CIP bonds, are projects that I think, well, especially the CIP bonds, are essential service projects, right? These are fire stations that are, I'll use the word antiquated and to some extent market obsolete, simply because they were constructed at a time when the apparatus was much smaller, when we had frankly, a different staffing model. And so, you know, we have outgrown these fire stations. Replacing them is a matter of when, it's not if, okay? So we're trying to make sure that we have a methodology available to the council to provide assurance that these projects can get done in a reasonable time period. So the whole methodology here is based on the notion that the council commits to an annual appropriation, as it were, for debt service for capital projects, right? And so the 1.5% that Lori has modeled is what allows these projects to proceed in the years that they are scheduled in the illustration, right? And then the rest of the calculation obviously has to do with the, you know, the decisions that we make around our annual tax levy. And that's, you know, frankly, that's going to vary from year to year depending on whatever the economic circumstances are, the needs of the organization, et cetera, et cetera. The 3.5% for operations, we selected because in most years we see an increase for just keeping the operation at par is usually going to be somewhere in that neighborhood of 3%, right? And that's a pretty typical number. So that 3.5% is not an excessive number. I think it's just reflective of what we typically do on a year-to-year and then what other emerging needs there are within the community. So that's how we came to that 3.5 and 1.5 number. But the biggest point here is trying to find a number that the council can commit to that will keep these projects on time. And then what Lori did was model out the years when those projects could occur based on that model. So with that sort of big picture, now's a good time to get into questions, if you have questions.
One more item?
Yep.
Just the red line.
Did I miss part of your spreadsheet, fun?
No, I just want to highlight again to emphasize my indemnification piece of this. These worksheets are for illustration purposes only. On the possible range in tax levies that may be needed in the future to support just use essential core services, these worksheets contain many variables and assumptions, all of which will change in the future. Thank you.
So you did the, the modeling for the expenditures?
Yeah.
And I'm assuming you also did a modeling for the income? So bottom line, what, what would this, have you modeled what this would cost? What this would add to our median valued home in Bloomington?
Mayor and council, I have not gone to that step at this point. We, we've looked at, you know, just some of these assumptions and just trying to get to more of a levy number that we can take and put into that. And, you know, assessing group that works with property taxes can take this number and, and do their best guess.
Yeah, understood.
Again, evaluation and changes.
And as, as market values change and so on, I, I get that, but, Mr. Brugge?
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing. Is the ability to estimate impact, market value impact, is very difficult beyond 2023. Just because that's the timeframe for the, the pay year based on the assessments. And so our, our assessor staff has a pretty good sense of where we're going to be for '22, pay '23. But beyond that, it's, it's tough to say. And as the council is well aware, the Minnesota property taxation system is complex, to say the least. And so, you know, the dynamics of commercial and industrial properties and residential properties and fiscal disparities just makes anything beyond a, a year and a half or two years out really difficult to estimate.
House Member Loman? I'm sorry.
Oh, I had one set of, another set of worksheets.
Thank goodness.
If we just, I can just have you focus on same assumptions. Only this point, I didn't keep it at 5%. I just created a levy of what we would need to afford that project in that year. So if you want to just look at the blue column there, that is the levy to afford those projects based off of the timing that is currently in the CIP. So the big pieces that it would go up to would be a 7.41% in 2024 because we would do the garage and park, and prima bonds in the same year, based on the timing in the CIP. We would go up to that. What you see in the rest of this is a lot lower in your handouts. But that again, is keeping operations at 3.5% and all the rest of it goes to debt. So that's all the piece I wanted to point out.
Thank you. House Member Loman?
So I guess what my, I, I like how this is modeled out. And so, so with that being said, I guess my question that I had, and I'm pretty sure the CIP manager knows where I'm going to go with this. If I wanted to add something to this, let's say sidewalks. I want to keep that even with, you know, what we're doing, you know, on the other side of the house. What does that look like?
Mayor and council, in our franchise fee discussion late last month, we talked about the two sidewalk projects on Nicollet in Portland and those totaled $5.5 million. You know, if we look at.
Well, I don't want to interrupt you.
I mean, we, we would just need to add that in, in those years. And they would add to the levy, you know, they would have been in the years '26 through '27. So it would be an increase there.
I had a kind of different thought in my mind and that, that's a good one. But it's a little different than what you're putting forward. Sort of what I want to do, or my ideas, my thought is, is that we would, whatever we are putting in for the trails, that we would match that in, in the CIP. That this would be our instrument to, to match how much we're putting in year for year with, with the trails. And maybe some years it's a little bit higher, some years it's a little bit lower. How would something like that work? Where we're trying to, you know, equal what we're, you know, putting aside, you know, year after year for, you know, for our, you know, our sidewalks and those trails. And so that, that's the piece I'm trying to figure out. How do I layer that on top? And obviously with the CIP would, you know, would, you might do a bunch now, a bunch later. But how, how could I track that so that, so that I could, I could, I could reasonably tell a taxpayer that, you know, on par, if you were to do this over 10 years? that, you know, on par, if you were to do this over ten years, they're going to be equal?
Mr. Brugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Councilmember Loman, I think the best way to do that is, Councilmember Loman, to ask your colleagues if they would like us to model that as we're putting together our CIP and then incorporate that in. So, you know, we do have our projection for trails that comes out of the, the, the franchise fee-funded project area. If you wanted to match the trails with the sidewalk, we could do two things. One, we could look at including it in that, in that model, or we could add it into the CIP, general tax levy supported model here and bring that back to the council when we're presenting the CIP for discussion and consideration. It would just be a matter of if the council wanted to do that, Lori would just plug it into this model here and then see how the dynamics change. But I think that's the best thing to do is if there's some, some commitment by the council to want to see that, to give us that direction, we'll prepare it.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I guess, just, just briefly, I would be interested in that especially in terms of, maybe not even a dollar-for-dollar match to what we're spending on trails because the sidewalk versus trail density, I know it's a little different east versus west, different mileage to cover things like that. But if we were going to invest in a big way, top of the head, what would that dollar amount be in sidewalks? And this, this might be a bigger conversation, we can talk offline. But I guess my question is, obviously, just the way the community developed, we put a lot of infrastructure out there pretty quick. And it looks like a lot of that is kind of coming due. Is there a way we can be intentional about trying to break that cycle a little bit with how we're making these investments? So we're not setting up a council fifty years from now to have to figure out the same situation? How do we replace all this at once again?
That's a good question, Councilmember Martin. Mr. Brugge?
I saw Lori leaning into the microphone, so I was going to let her have first crack at that answer.
Mayor and councilmember Martin, when we look at, I'll just use the fire station as an example. And it was scheduled to occur five years ago. And so, you know, if we had started putting, but, you know, economics and tax levy and, so if, if we build these, say, every five years, but we're already behind the dime on several of these and we've truly kicked the can on several of these projects. And when you've seen the, I don't have the grid with me right now, but when we do the CIP, you, you see where all these facilities are in the red zone. So, it is hopefully by tracking it now that as they're getting there, we take care of it.
And Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Martin, one of the things that we've talked about at staff that we would do that, you know, not a criticism of any of our predecessors, but it's just not the forethought to do that, is with each of these projects, identify, you know, when is that likely replacement date, right? And then start to build, you know, we have a ten-year CIP right now. We have a project list that goes beyond the ten-year CIP, is making sure that our project list goes beyond fifteen or twenty years, right? So we can see those dates coming. But the other thing about getting into the cycle of utilizing the, the facility debt is that when those come off the debt services, you can make a decision of whether you're going to continue to cycle those through. I mean, we're talking about ten- or twenty-year debt issues and we're talking about fifty to seventy-year facilities, right? And so, trying to figure out how we match up so that we don't get into the situation fifty years from now where all of a sudden, six buildings need to be replaced in a ten-year timeframe, I think will be a lot easier to accomplish.
Council, anything additional? Councilmember Loman?
So, I, I, this one example that you have here, Lori, we've got in 2024 with a tax levy of seven, you know, forty-one. If you were to try to smooth that out at all, is there a way to, I mean, what would be the, did you look at it all in terms of what the impacts would be by, by smoothing that, that levy out? By, by changing it or shifting that around at all? I mean, is there a way to?
Mayor and council, when you look at the two projects, other than either waiting an extra year for the garage or carving out the parks, you, you can't do both. I mean, and, and the garage is quite a large item. So, I mean, when you look at the garage, that million eight, and I'll just, you know, again rounding, six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars is one percent. This is approximately a three percent tax levy just for this item.
And so I guess.
So, it's hard to smooth out one item.
Right. So it was nothing we could do, I mean, because I guess the reason why I ask it is, you know, we have a lot of, well, we're using a different terminology, positive, you know, performance on our budget. Is there a way from an operational standpoint to do some things in, in the year prior and the year after to bring that overall level down? So that as you're, because I just can't imagine trying to pull something like that off at, at that amount. I mean, I, I can't, I don't think we've ever had a levy that high. And so I just kind of, that, that scares me when I see that. You know, forget the other fives that are on there, but it just kind of scares me, you know, anything that's, you know, five plus.
Yep. Mayor and councilmember Loman, that's why when you looked at the previous one, it got, it did not occur in twenty-three. It was occurring in twenty-five because we had to build up the tax levy base enough to cover that piece of it. So, the first model had more smoothing than the second model.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, Lori, would it be feasible, I think, asking, following along with Councilmember Loman's question? So, utilizing positive budget variance as an example, where in most years, we allocate those funds to the strategic priorities fund, we could similarly direct some of those dollars into this capital project fund that you're using just to build that up. So that would certainly be at the council's discretion every year when we make that allocation about where you want to direct it.
Agree with the city manager.
All right, these are a lot of numbers and a lot to chew on now that, we've had them for a week or so now. But now that it's been explained to us, it takes on an entirely different light and take a look at it. So, I'll get you in just a second, Councilmember Beloga. So I think our homework here is go over this again, if you need to go back and watch the video of the council meeting and Lori's presentation again, and go through this again a couple of times until it all makes sense. Because it's, it's a lot of information. It really is. But I think as Councilmember Loman said, I appreciate the way it's laid out. It does make sense. It's, you know, math can be your friend here and it just, it, it does kind of track from point A to point B. It's just a matter of kind of wrapping our heads around all of it. So. Councilmember, I'm sorry.
I'm available too if they have more counsel.
Councilmember Beloga?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lori, did you take a crack at putting the below-the-line items for sales tax revenue bonds into one model? And if you did, what did that look like?
I had put some information together, I would say about four months ago, and it was just shocking numbers. So I just sorted them out this way. But I can definitely take these two models and add everything below the line in there so that you could see the full impact on when we could either afford it with a five percent or when we could afford it over the next twenty-five years.
And I, I think it's valuable because if, if there is a local sales tax option, of course, the voters have to approve that, correct?
Correct.
And they, they really need to understand what the impacts are. And I think that's a way to help display that information. And also then what the priorities would be. Because if you were doing this with, you know, the order of magnitude of the items below the line, it's going to extend those items well into the future. Thank you.
Mr. Brugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmember Beloga and councilmembers. That's an excellent point. And just to remind councils, some of the numbers that we shared a couple of weeks ago when we talked about the local option sales tax, just utilizing our, our next couple of years median value as a base for calculating impact, if we were to do this hundred and fifty million dollars of projects through our general tax levy and not through local option, it would be about a two hundred and twenty dollar a year increase to property taxes, as opposed to about a seventy dollar household impact via the local option sales tax. So, Councilmember Beloga's point is very well taken. But for illustration purposes, I think it's a good exercise for us to do to either demonstrate how much the impact would be if, if these projects were all to occur in a similar couple of years and then consequently, what the impact would be if we had to space these out over a number of years to get it to a number that is palatable to the taxpayer. Thank you, Councilmember Beloga.
Thank you.
Council, anything else on this? Definitely something to think about. Definitely work that we need to consider, continue considering as we move forward here because this has got some big impacts, not only financially, but also from a, obviously from the facility and amenity and quality of life kind of standpoint from our community, how we want to rebuild it and catch up on some of the past deferred maintenance and build our centers of community and make this a place that people want to move to for a variety of reasons. So, Councilmember Coulter?
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. Just to, to clarify with staff, there, there is not any other ask here beyond look at these numbers and think about them, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Coulter. We're, and we're not suggesting that we would begin the annual levy for debt service in 2022. If, if council wants us to model that, we can do that. It would be good to give us that feedback now because we're preparing information to bring to council on August twenty-third, when we're going to have that preliminary levy discussion with council. And we'll share with you the, the, where we're at in the requested needs for 2022. So that discussion is coming in a couple of weeks. I would say that staying the course as we've laid it out here is probably a good thing to do based on what I know about 2022 right now. And you'll hear more about that in two weeks.
All right. Everybody good? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Appreciate it. Item eight point two, is there a city council policy and issue update? Mr. Brugge?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything else for the council this evening. Just want to again, say thank you to Lori for doing her best to effectively communicate really difficult information in a easily digestible format, so.
Council, anything to add? Noting that we are at the ten o'clock hour and we still have our closed session to get to. So, anything to add? Councilmember Loman?
I'll be real quick here. We had a question here and I think it just, it's timely to ask it now. I think one of the respondents asked it earlier in the, in the meeting about our pride event. And I, I just wanted to ask the city manager, you know, to, to your knowledge or understanding, and maybe you can't answer this tonight, and I think that's perfectly fine, but I just thought it would be worth asking the question because there was a request to cancel the, the event on, on the fourteenth because that we were using money, money for a secular group or a religious group. Do you understand, are, are we giving money to any religious group, you know, for the pride festival? Do you, you may not know, but.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, I appreciate the question. As I understood what the commenter was saying, was some sort of a suggestion that the event has some basis as a religious event and that religion being secular humanism. I have not heard any of the organizers, any of the planned attendees or any, anybody else frankly, talk about that. So I'm not sure where that commenter is, is gaining that insight. But it is absolutely not a conversation that anybody here has had. So there is no religious affiliation, there is no confusion about the Establishment Clause of the Constitution that has anything to do with the event on August fourteenth.
And then finally, should mention something to the effect of sales tax dollars being used for, you know, in reference to the lemon tax or lemon test. Any sales tax dollars being used for that event?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Loman, I am similarly unclear about that comment as well. As was shared with the council before, there is some city money that is being used to help plan the event. We allocate a certain amount each year for the Human Rights Commission to do their work. There's forty-five hundred dollars that the Human Rights Commission has budgeted for this event. There's also at least twenty-six hundred dollars in donated community support that is being utilized as well. So it truly is a community and city partnership to do this event.
There are other questions I have, but obviously I can ask those next week. And the event is on the fourteenth?
It is. It's this Saturday.
And I'm looking forward to attending it myself. I'm glad that staff has, as, every year I've complained that we've sent our money to Minneapolis and not do it here. And now, you know, it'd be here. So I'm looking forward to that. Thank you, manager, Mayor.
Council, anything else? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, once again, Councilmember Loman set me up nicely here. And, you know, I, I wrote out some thoughts that, that have been kind of circling in my head here. And I, I do feel like I need to speak to this, partly because this is our last meeting before pride occurs, partly because we don't have a meeting next Monday, and partly because I've been getting lots of emails about this. And, you know, the truth is that what we've been hearing is a variation on a theme that the LGBTQ plus community has heard before. We have no problem with you, but why do you have to be in my face about it or keep it in the bedroom? In other words, you can be who you are if I don't have to see it. And I, I think for me, it just feels like Don't Ask, Don't Tell by another name. And I recognize, you know, the, the audience is pretty cleared out how, here now, and I don't know how many folks are watching council meeting at ten o'clock, but I need to say this. The whole point of pride is to reject that thinking in its entirety, to celebrate who we are as a community, all of us. And individual performers aside, we can have that conversation another time if we want to, we need to be clear that drag is a part of LGBTQ plus culture. It is a part of the culture of that particular community. And that is a community that has long been ridiculed, abused, discriminated against, and continues to be even today. I'm going to try to keep myself from getting too emotional here. This is a community that represents our friends and family, our neighbors, folks we go to church with, our teachers, doctors, nurses, paramedics, firefighters, and yes, even police officers. The very same folks that some of these people here tonight were claiming they were backing just a few weeks ago. But we also need to understand, to be frank, that drag is a part of straight culture too. If you've ever watched an episode of the TV show MASH or watched the movies Some Like It Hot, Mulan, Mrs. Doubtfire, you've seen this before you. And one of the reasons I know that this is part of a straight, of straight culture as well is that just within the last few years, in that very auditorium, I attended a production of Victor Victoria centered precisely around drag performers. And if you're ever interested in seeing that production for yourself, it was a movie first starring Julie Andrews.
Thank you, Councilmember Coulter? Councilmember Beloga?
Got a hand up. It's an old one, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmembers, anything else for item eight point two? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item eight point three, which is our closed session of the city council. As I mentioned earlier, Minnesota law allows for closure of council meetings for a variety of different items. Not a lot of them, but just a couple, one of them being discussion of litigation, which we can move into closed session for. And so that's what we are going to do is move into closed session. We're going to adopt a resolution here, moving into closed session. We're going to adopt a resolution here, moving into closed session. We will clear the council chambers, we will go into closed session, and we will come back into open session to adjourn the meeting. So, if you're watching right now, you can stick around if you'd like, but all you're going to see is us come back into session simply to close the meeting and adjourn.
Mayor, that might not be totally true. We might take action after the closed session on an addition to adjournment.
Very good.
Sorry for the clarification, but...
Thank you for the clarification. We indeed might take action after the closed session. Okay. So, that is where we are, and so, counsel, I would look for a motion to adopt the resolution to go into closed session.
So moved.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Beloga, second by Councilmember Martin, to adopt the resolution directing the closure of a public meeting of the city council. Hearing no further commentary, but questions by the city council? Mr. Brohart? Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries, we are officially in closed session, and we will, as I said, come back into open session to either make a decision or not, and to head into or to ultimately adjourn. So, councilmembers, you have a separate login that was emailed out to you. If you could go to that right now, that'd be great. Thank you.
[326.30]
Close session, we are back in open session now. Council, I would look for action.
Mayor, I will make the motion just as soon as I can get to it.
Councilmember Coulter.
I have it, yes, and I'm going to... Mayor, I will move to authorize the mayor and city manager to enter into an agreement arising from the Inray Municipal Stormwater Pond Consolidated Litigation.
Second.
We have a motion by councilmember Coulter, a second by councilmember Lohman to authorize the mayor and manager to enter into an agreement arising from the Inray Municipal Stormwater Pond Consolidation Litigation. Hearing no further, council discussion. Mr. Brilhart.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Bussie.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. With that, we have concluded our agenda. Council, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by councilmember Carter, a second by councilmember Lohman to adjourn. Hearing no further council discussion. Mr. Brilhart. Baloga.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Coulter.
Aye.
Lohman.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.